But but put this organization information together for the future county attorney. And so the future county attorney worked on it with me and our current county attorney and his staff worked on it with me. Matter of fact, I hate to put her on the spot, but you want me to have it read for the committee?
You just want to read the captions and if there's anything highlighted points in it that you wanted to highlight?
Well, I mean, there's there's quite a bit of information in there. I mean, it really needs to be brought if we're going to discuss it. I mean, we'll do whatever you want to do, but it's 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 pretty pretty prominent what's going on.
Okay.
Go ahead and read it, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash nineteen, a resolution of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners establishing the structure and organization of the Hamilton County Attorney's Office, whereas the Board of Commissioners deems it necessary and appropriate to formalize the organizational structure of the Hamilton County Attorney's Office to ensure efficiency, accountability, and the effective delivery of legal services. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has reviewed the current operations and recognizes the need for an updated framework that reflects the evolving legal and operational needs of the county. And whereas the Hamilton County Attorney's Office serves as chief legal advisor to the Board of Commissioners, the County Mayor's Office, Constitutional Offices, Departments, Agencies, and Officials of Hamilton County. And now therefore be it resolved by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners that Section One purpose, the purpose of this resolution is to establish the organizational structure and staffing of the Hamilton County Attorney's Office to promote efficient and effective legal services to the county. Section Two, structure of the County Attorney's Office, the Hamilton County Attorney's Office shall be organized as follows. A county attorney, the county attorney shall be appointed by the county mayor and confirmed with a majority vote by the Board of Commissioners and shall serve as the chief legal officer for Hamilton County. The county attorney's salary shall be set by the Board of Commissioners. The county attorney through consultation with the mayor and finance shall set the salaries of the employees in the county attorney's office. Those salaries and other expenditures of the office shall be presented yearly to the Board of Commissioners within the county's yearly budget presentation. Neither the county attorney or the other staff attorneys in said office shall engage in any outside county government legal practice. The county attorney can be terminated by two-thirds vote of the Board of Commissioners without concurrence of the mayor and by majority vote of the Board of Commissioners with concurrence of the mayor, both upon ninety days written notice. B, positions within county attorney's office, the county attorney's office shall include the following positions, subject to modification by budgetary considerations or other considerations as needed. One, deputy county attorney. Two, staff attorney. Three, legal administrative services manager. Four, paralegal. Section Three, responsibilities, the Hamilton County Attorney's Office shall, one, provide legal advice and representation to the Board of Commissioners, the county mayor, Constitutional Offices, county officials, and departments. Two, draft and review contracts, resolutions, and other legal documents. Three, represent the county and its employees in legal proceedings. Four, perform such other legal services as required by law or as directed by the Board of Commissioners and the county mayor. Section Four, funding and resources, the Board of Commissioners and the county mayor shall allocate funding in the annual budget for the staffing and operational needs of the county attorney's office. Section Five, outside counsel. As may become necessary pursuant to the Hamilton County Employee Liability Plan and the Tennessee Rules of Professional Responsibility, the county attorney shall be permitted to retain outside counsel for the representation of the county, county employees, officials, and county employees on matters where special legal representation is deemed necessary and to address matters where ethical and/or conflict of interest may arise and legal representation from outside counsel is necessary. Prior to the retention of outside counsel, the county attorney shall consult with the Board of Commissioners, the county mayor, and finance regarding the necessity of outside counsel. Section Six, effective date, the resolution shall be affected as of the first day of July twenty-twenty-five, the public welfare requiring it.
Thank you. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. So, Mr. Chairman, as you tasked, our committee was tasked to put these guidelines together for the future of the county attorney's office. And several things that were brought up before was about outside counsel. And as you see, it says prior to the retention of outside counsel, it needs to come before us and the mayor. Up there where it says positions within the county attorney's office, deputy county attorney, and there's a one by, that means one. Staff attorney, there'll be two. Legal administrative service manager, there'll be one. Paralegals, there'll be two. Something that's been brought up many times in many discussions was about outside, well, it was about our attorneys doing outside legal work. So going forward, that will not be able to be. Now, if you have some suggestions we can talk about, but I know we've got a busy day and that's why I wanted it all red because it pretty well explains itself. First and foremost, I want to thank Janie for working on this, but Ruben and his staff for working on this as well. I mean, I know he's retired, but the whole staff helped us pull this together.
Very briefly, I thank you for that wonderful reading. I was going to ask my question in the middle to give you a little break, but I wasn't recognized, so they couldn't they couldn't see my light, but thank you for that good job. One thing that you mentioned outside counsel will be hired as needed. I I think that we, there's possibility that someone on the staff may be used on a regular basis for litigation, but this would not preclude Ms. Varnell being able to hire someone to do a continual litigation outside of the regular office, even if that person had an outside practice, correct?
There'll be no more outside work. It'll be, it'll all be within the county government, but but she needs the ability, and Ruben can probably explain this better than I can, but she needs the ability to bring in professionals like when it was Occupy or Occupy Hamilton County or whatever it was, you know, Ruben's staff, they brought in outside counsel that was. Several different issues that are out of the purview of our county attorney's office. A lot of times they have to bring in a person. No different than we're using. But this also means that the county attorneys that work for the county work for the county and don't work for anybody. Did I answer your question?
Not really.
Chairman Taylor, will you will you help me out here?
Can I, may I, may I clarify just a little bit? I do not want to, we have some county attorneys who will be leaving, but they still have such institutional knowledge. They can be of aid to her if she chooses to use them in litigation. And so this would not preclude that she could not use them, correct?
No, she'll have the authority, she'll have the ability to use anybody she wants and then bring it before our body or the mayor and have a discussion before they're hired.
That's that's what I wanted to make sure.
I misunderstood your question. And actually, it was the benefit the attorney's office going forward. It's it's not to deter or hinder them. It's to help them with their work going forward. And that was at Ruben's request, actually. Anything else?
Mr. Beck. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, then I guess we won't leave any comments going forward.
Sounds good.
All right.
That answer, thank you. We'll go to Delinquent Tax Property Committee. Commissioner Mackey, you got one, resolution six twenty-five dash forty-eight?
I do, Chair. Chair, this is a routine matter, trying to get properties back on the tax record, pretty straight and simple. Thank you, sir.
Okay. See no lights on for comments, so we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna read it, just the captions.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-eight, a resolution establishing the minimum bid amount for certain parcels of property acquired by Hamilton County through previous delinquent tax sales, authorizing the offer of said parcels for sale at the minimum bid amount and authorizing certain said parcels to be offered for sale for an amount less than the total amount of taxes, penalty, costs, and interest accumulated against the property.
Okay, so we'll take that up next week. There's no lights, no one standing, so we'll move to Building and Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Hilton, you got one item, six twenty-five forty-nine?
Madam Clerk, could you read six twenty, six twenty-five dash four-nine?
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-nine, a resolution to approve the firm of MTA Architecture and Planning for the design of the Saudi-Dazim Middle School Renovations and Additions and utilize a construction manager at risk procurement process and contract for the construction.
Mr. Lemon?
Yes, Commissioner, went through our our standard selection committee process through resolution and MOU with the school board. And so we had sent names of architects. This one comes to you as recommendation for this particular project. I will note, you know, we had a follow-up conversation last week on one project that did not have this on there. If you will notice, we did put construction manager at risk to to.
Yes, sir.
Meet that requirement to notify the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Shipley, would you want to add anything to this?
Amen. After many, many years of needing a school, it's gonna happen, thanks to Ronda Thurman, Steve Slater, you commissioners, and everybody, our community is real excited. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. No lights?
Commissioner Graham?
Okay. Well, I think, does it, does it pertain to this at all?
No, it doesn't, that's why, I'm sorry, I thought he was done when I turned my light on. I just want to say that, I'm sorry, back in legal committee, our future county attorney is not going to be here next week, and our county attorney will be. But if there's, so if there's any questions that, she's going to be actually on vacation next week. So if there's any questions between now and next week, or I guess she's going to be available till the end of the week, and Ruben will be available the whole time. But if there's any questions, you can either send them to me or send them to either one of them, but she's not going to be here next week. Is that a problem with any of that?
Thank you, Chair. We're we're done with building in economic.
Move to finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, if you are ready, let's start with six twenty-five dash twenty-six, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash twenty-six, a resolution approving the purchase, delivery, and installation of fixtures and furniture from CWC Incorporated from the Omni Partner Purchasing Cooperative, amounting to ninety-two thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars and seven cents for the new Hamilton County Forensic Center and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, six twenty-five twenty-seven, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution to appropriate up to eight million five hundred fifty thousand in bond funds to the Hamilton County Schools for investments in major deferred maintenance projects and approve, as approved by the Hamilton County Board of Education.
Got one. Just give me just one moment. Commissioner Sharp, you had a question, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This this expenditure, is this the, I received a list last night from Tucker about projects. Is is this the funds that are addressing that list of school projects?
Mr. Browner?
I don't.
I don't know the email that you received yesterday from, anyway, but but the gist of it is the listing of the projects for the eight million five hundred fifty thousand is included in your packet with the resolution.
I do believe yes is the answer.
And now I'm hearing in the background, the answer is yes.
Yes is the answer. Okay, and these are all projects that have been pre-approved by the school board?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually, they are up for vote by the school board the day before next week. So, or, yeah, they will be voted upon before you approve them. They've been presented to the school board.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, are we putting the cart before the horse here?
Dr. Robertson, do you mind clarifying, sir?
It's on the school board agenda tomorrow night, so if you guys approve it next week, they've approved it tomorrow, then we should be good to go. We're trying to, these are, if you look at the list, these are projects that we're trying to get done before the start of school. It's a lot of chills, a lot of bruise, you know, things like that. So we're trying to just get this expedited so we can get going. Recognizing what the mayor said earlier, like our teams, because of all these projects are stretched thin, so they need as much time to get them done before the start of the year. But the school board should vote on this tomorrow night.
Okay, one other question, thank you for that. One other question. In the description of some of these, it says like, I don't know, system-wide mulch, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that, and this says it's like for, this is for District Six, apparently. So is that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of mulch? It's just for District Six, or?
No, no, sir. The the system-wide things like flooring, asbestos abatement, mulch, HVAC equipment is stuff that can be used district-wide. And so it's through purchasing agreements and it's just getting approval to use those funds for district-wide needs.
I got you. Okay, that's cool. I'm not sure that, okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you.
Good, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. All right, Madam Clerk, moving on, six twenty-five dash twenty-eight, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution to amend the school's federal project fund by one million seven hundred fourteen thousand three hundred thirty dollars and adding revenue of one million seven hundred fourteen thousand three hundred thirty dollars to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget to amend the self-funded projects fund budget by forty-three million three hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars, appropriating fund balance of three hundred nineteen thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars and adding forty-three million forty-three thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget to amend the general purpose fund budget by sixteen million nine hundred fifty-two thousand thirty-four dollars, appropriating fund balance of eleven million two hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred ninety dollars and adding five million six hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars of revenue to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget to amend the school nutrition fund budget by six hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars, appropriating fund balance of five hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and adding one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollars of revenue to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Sue, anything to add? I do have one light. Commissioner Graham, would you like to ask a question first?
Yeah, can she read that ten times real fast? No. Does this add anything to the maintenance of effort? Or does it change the maintenance of effort in any way?
Yeah, it does not. The primary thing on the general purpose is the biggest number is our twenty-four purchase order carryovers from our fund balance. So that's the biggest number. Also, school summer learning grant that we got from the state. And then the big numbers on the self-funded is the bond funds. That's how we show it through our books. That's why those numbers are so big, are the bonds funds flowing through our self-funded.
I I thought that was the answer, but I wanted it on the record. So the maintenance of effort stays the same?
Correct.
And we've never missed it ever.
The revenue, the actual revenue.
Maintenance of effort.
Not from the budget side, but from the actual revenue is lower than the maintenance of effort.
Lee, have we ever missed the maintenance of effort?
As legally set by the state, no, we have never been in violation of maintenance of effort.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mackey, I see your light, sir.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Did I hear her say they can carry money over that was assigned to this year?
Sue, did you want to clarify that? You speaking of the bond funds, sir?
Yes.
The bond funds are just generally at the end of the year, if we have a purchase order that we've initiated with, so that in this case, twenty-four budget funds, it's set aside in our fund balance. And then, because sometimes the payments don't happen until after, you know, the end of the year for certain things that services that we've already incurred.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, six twenty-five dash twenty-nine, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign a grant agreement with a term beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, in the amount of five hundred ten thousand dollars with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services.
Ma'am, just left anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, let's move on, six twenty-five dash thirty, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to accept a one-point-five million Fast Track Economic Development Fund Grant from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development and to sign any and all grant-related documents on behalf of West Star Aviation LLC to assist with the company's expansion in Hamilton County.
Still moving. Six twenty-five dash thirty-one, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-one, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to accept a community development block grant for the recovery housing program in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on behalf of the McNabb Center and requiring no match and authorizing Southeast Tennessee Development District to provide grant administration services on behalf of Hamilton County.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner, I just wanted to raise that both we have representatives from West Star and McNabb in the room. I want to thank them for their partnership and their support in getting these on the agenda. They're here if you had any questions.
I see no questions, but thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's move on, six twenty-five dash thirty-two, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-two, a resolution to authorize the payment of one-time stipends in the amount of three thousand dollars each for five employees totaling fifteen thousand dollars with funds from the Felony Community Corrections Program Grant as provided by the State of Tennessee Department of Corrections.
What? Six twenty-five dash thirty-three, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-three, a resolution to relinquish Hamilton County's interest in a nineteen-eighty-nine Pierce Pumper Tanker, nineteen-eighty-seven Chevrolet Deep South Tanker, nineteen-ninety-one E-one Simon Duplex Custom Pumper, nineteen-ninety-seven four-gas Spartan Fire Truck, nineteen-ninety-three E-one International Pumper, and a nineteen-ninety-two Ford Super Duty Mini Pumper Truck co-titled with Mowbray Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief, any, anything to add, sir? All right, Madam Clerk, six twenty-five dash thirty-four, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-four, a resolution accepting the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment from Safe Industries for the Office of Emergency Management and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Still no lights. Madam Clerk, six twenty-five dash thirty-five, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-five, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign a contract amendment between the Tennessee Department of Health and the Hamilton County Health Department to increase the childhood-led poisoning prevention program grant from two hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars to four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the fiscal years beginning July first, twenty-twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, six twenty-five dash thirty-six has been pulled, so we'll move on to six twenty-five dash thirty-seven, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-seven, a resolution to adjust the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five general fund expenditures budget in order to reclassify expenditures related to leases classified under GASB eighty-seven, which governs accounting for leases, and GASB ninety-six, which governs accounting for subscription-based information technology arrangement.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Browner, what does that look like, practically speaking?
This is basically a standard housekeeping resolution that we do and we've done for several years. It's pertaining to leases and if you want to get, well, well, basically, the way we budget for everything, including lease expenses, is we have that expense being charged to each department that uses those for purposes of generally accepted accounting principles. The requirement is that those leases should be accounted for in one separate cost center, as in all leases for all departments should be in one cost center. We don't like operating that way. So we we basically budget by department, we expense by department, and then at the very end of the year, we'll make a reclass to move those into that one cost center. But it's just a housekeeping thing we've done for several years.
Okay, thank you.
Good, sir. Now, for the last, Madam Clerk, moving on, six twenty-five dash thirty-eight, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-eight, a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five general fund revenue and expenditure budgets by five million six hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and forty-five cents for the termination of certain federal grants passed through the Tennessee Department of Health for grant funds previously awarded to the Hamilton County Health Services Division.
All right, thank you. Six twenty-five dash thirty-nine, please. Excuse me. Commissioner Sharp, do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like some clarification on this.
Mr. Browner?
These are two grants we received or that we had budgeted for throughout the year. One was an ELC grant for, well, ELC grant, the other was for COVID immunization grant that we received notice in at the end of March that the federal government would be no longer supporting the expenditures for those projects. So this is mainly to amend the budget because it's such a significant item to reflect that those, the grant revenue source has been taken away and those expenditures will not be taking place.
What is EOC?
ELC. Yeah, Sonia, if you want to kick in on more of the details?
Thank you. Expansion, expansion and detection funds for our public health emergency preparedness grant.
So what do we do with that money?
Those funds, as far as the funds that were allocated for this budget year that was terminated was, we're going to go towards the building for the new health department building fund.
Okay, so we're short how much money to do that with?
About, about four-point-one million.
Four-point-one million dollars that we're going to have to make up. Okay. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. I appreciate it, Chairman. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, six twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Resolution six twenty-five dash thirty-nine, a resolution to amend the Hamilton County Fixed Asset Policy.
Thank you. Mr. Browner, anything to add?
Again, this is a housekeeping issue, but it's the, we've had a fixed asset policy. I guess it was adopted in two thousand and four. It was last amended in two thousand and seventeen. This amendment is primarily to add leases into our fixed asset policy, which, again, according to accounting guidelines, leases are basically a right to use asset. So that's what, this one's more of a technical housekeeping, but it's needed to be done to add to our policy.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, six twenty-five dash forty, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty, a resolution accepting the proposal of Tetra Tech, Inc. to provide disaster debris monitoring services on an as-needed basis for Hamilton County beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Six twenty-five dash forty-one.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-one, a resolution accepting the proposal of Series Environmental Services, Inc. to provide disaster debris collection and disposal services on an as-needed basis for Hamilton County beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Six twenty-five dash forty-two, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-two, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to expend funds and to enter into and execute a contract with Reagan Smith Associates LLC for the design engineering services for the intersection improvements at Hunter Road and LeBron Sturci Drive for an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred dollars.
Janie, do you have something to add, sir?
Just a reminder that this was one of the recommended projects out of the, out of the Roads Committee that Dr. Highlander spoke to earlier. The funding source of this will be out of the original five-point-eight set aside for road projects.
Excellent. Thank you. Six twenty-five dash forty-three, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-three, a resolution approving repairs and restoration of the Fireman's Fountain from Robinson Iron Corporation, amounting to ninety-four thousand nine hundred dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you. Six twenty-five dash forty-four, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-four, a resolution to appropriate a total of fifty thousand dollars of unrestricted distributor opioid settlement funds to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank.
See no questions there? Six twenty-five dash forty-five, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty- Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-five, a resolution determining the certified tax rate in accordance with TCA Section sixty-seven dash five dash seventeen oh one and adopting a rate as the tax levy for the year twenty twenty-five for Hamilton County, Tennessee.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Hilton.
Mr. Haynes.
Sure.
Thank you.
The creator of so many conversations lately.
No doubt. Marty Haynes, Assessor of Property.
We're all thrilled that the millage rate is going down and we're going to be, you know, we're happy to adopt that. I wanted to make one suggestion. Next time we go through reappraisal, it would be incredibly helpful if, to coincide with the reappraisals going out, we we send some educational information. I think the public in general does not understand how, how the process works, that it's going to draw down, just like it did this time. I think we, as a county, on a lot of things.
Right.
This process included, I think we need to do a better job of educating people just so that all of us up here don't experience the public's wrath.
Words well spoken. I will say, thank you for those comments. And I mentioned this last week when the mayor and I had a joint press conference in an effort to help the public understand. We did have a press conference in this room. Two members of the media showed up that day. So I, there needs to be more information. We do the very best we can, and I wish, wish we could get it out in a more timely manner.
Maybe, maybe one piece of paper that goes along with the reappraisal notice that kind of explains a narrative and maybe a math formula.
As long as the county commission will approve an increase in printing cost and mailing cost, I'll be happy to send.
I promise there's willpower on this board to make that happen.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. I want to say Commissioner Haynes. Property values went up, and even though the millage rate went down, I've had a couple of calls about people being priced out of their homes. Can elderly people still get their taxes frozen?
The senior tax freeze is available in the city of Chattanooga. The county offers through this body, property tax relief, matches what the state offers that is administered through the trustees office. You can apply for those benefits when the tax bills come out in October.
As a sidebar, you deal with so many more tax people than I do. Which would you rather have, a healthy county where your property values go up?
Right.
Or live in a county where people are leaving, things aren't well, and the value of your property goes down?
It's, it's been rare in Hamilton County that that's happened. They stayed flat in the twenty thirteen reappraisal. Basically, they stayed flat. But yes, we are a healthy county. People are wanting to move here. We do have a lot of growth going on. There are, in a typical year, Commissioner, somewhere between thirteen hundred and fifteen hundred new homes constructed each year. Apartment complexes, and I'm going from memory, I did not look this up this morning, so forgive me if I get these numbers wrong, but there are at least three apartment complexes, as we say, coming out of the ground now that will be completed sometime this calendar year, and there are six more that are permitted to go along with the three hundred and, I'll be conservative, say three hundred and twenty-plus apartment complexes across the county right now. We have somewhere in the neighborhood of hotels, a hundred plus, and there are two that I'm aware of right now that are near completion. I don't know when their completion date will be, so those will be added soon.
And it goes without saying, the more people who pay in, ultimately, everybody pays less.
Not everyone will pay, pay less. Tax rate is lower than it has been since World War II, as we discussed last week. This reappraisal, the numbers will not be any different as far as those folks who enjoy a decrease in their property taxes, talking just for us, just for the county. I, I know what the tax rates are for the community or the municipalities around the county, but it will hold true in those areas as well. About a third of the folks are going to pay less, a third are going to pay about the same, and a third, yes, are going to pay a little more, or maybe a lot more in some cases, depending on what happened with their property. And that is all relative. I was asked last week about that. Well, if the median is X, and that's half, half above and half below, how do we say that a third are about the same? Well, I'll give you a conversation I had with a very dear friend whose property went up sixty-seven percent in value. He said, so what's this going to do to my taxes? Has, has two, two children in elementary school, and he, I said, well, looks like your county taxes are going to go up about two hundred and twenty bucks. He said, so what am I worried about? So now that's one situation. That's not everybody. Two hundred and twenty dollars to a dual-income family, you know, making good money may not be a big deal. If you're a, if you're a widow lady living in East Ridge or Red Bank or Hickson or Murray Hills, that's, that's a big difference. So it, it's all relative as to your income and the value of your home, as to what that third in the middle really is.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Assessor Haynes. Maybe this is an unfair question, so maybe you can just send me this answer, but is there a certain percentage to where, I want to call it break even, but with all the assessments and the rest of us have all said, you know, that's the biggest things I've been getting my phone.
Sure.
Called about. So at what rate did, you know, if, if somebody's house went up twenty-five percent or somebody's house went up seventy-five percent, at what, what percentage rate, with the new millage rate coming down, at what percentage rate is still break even?
Yeah, so that, that gets asked often. The overall increase for the county was somewhere around fifty-seven point five seven is, was the overall median increase for the county. It was higher, so median is in the middle. You've got to remember, we, we take in all commercial, all industrial, all personal property, personal property being business assets. So when you do all that, that's a hundred and eighty-five thousand different parcels, not just a hundred and fifty thousand that we have on the residential side. And as a, as a sidebar to answer your question, the total value for the county, I looked it up this morning just to make sure I'd be correct in the, in our numbers, the assessed value for Hamilton County in twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen was nine billion seven hundred and fifty-six million seven hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. As we stand here today, in twenty twenty-five, the assessed value for Hamilton County is nineteen billion seven hundred and seventy-one million six hundred and one thousand dollars. So our, our values have doubled in eight years. That's how much the real estate market has changed in just eight years.
Well, I guess my question, and that's, that's awesome in one aspect of the word, but, but horrible in the other, you know.
Sure.
For people saying.
Right.
But I represent some of the richest people in town. I represent the very poorest in town, and the, the people that are worried about mostly by elderly residents like in Alton Park or, or in Eastlake, you know, so I guess what I'm asking is if a house, say a house value was a hundred thousand dollars and they saw sixty-four, sixty-five percent increase, so now their house went to a hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay. With the millage rate coming down, will they be at a break even there or?
They're, they're going to pay a little, they're going to pay a little bit more. If you're, if you're at that sixty-four percent or whatever, yes, you're going to, you're going to pay a little bit more.
So is there a percentage that is a break even?
That, that's where the, the point five seven comes into play. Okay.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Sharp, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Haynes, I appreciate you being here and answering these questions.
Sure.
This, this may have been answered a minute ago, and you may even have it on your website. If you could direct me, whatever, what I'm looking for is a map that would illustrate where the most significant property value increases have presented.
Okay. Yeah, we have that information available. We have shared it with the press. I know the Times Free Press had it in their, in an article and on their, their website, but updating onto our website sometimes can be just a little bit difficult, but I'll see if we can't get that put on there.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I, I try to read the paper every morning. I guess I missed that one.
Well, assessor of property news is usually not first on folks' reading list, except in a reappraisal year, I understand.
I'd like to think I'd pay attention to that one, but.
But I, I can get that for you, sure.
That would be great. Thank you. I think, you know, one thing that I've heard from a lot of my principals is that there are more and more needs that are presenting from students just for some basic items.
Right.
Toothbrushes, toothpaste, deodorant, you know, that type of stuff.
Right.
And as certain communities may experience a more adverse impact from reassessments, I think that's something that we need to pay attention to, to try to help folks. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shibley.
Yeah, good question, Marty. Did I hear you say thirteen to fifteen hundred houses a year?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yes, sir. About thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred new homes each year.
So pretty well on target, this gentleman's presentation. Fifteen-year period would be about twenty thousand homes versus forty-six.
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yes.
Thank you.
As a follow-up to that, Commissioner, if I could, the total number of parcels, this is, this is a rough estimate. When I took office in September of twenty sixteen, we were somewhere around a hundred and fifty-five thousand total parcels, and now we're closing in on a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Now, included in that are the personal property reports, which is business asset reports, and that's doubled, and that's part of, that's almost twenty thousand, it's nineteen thousand and something. So that's, that's a big chunk of that increase is, comes from folks, when COVID came along, that's where we had a lot of increase. So when I say a hundred and eighty for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, that's where that comes from. Yes, sir. Okay.
Commissioner Hilton, you have a follow-up?
Yes. That fifteen hundred is just single-family residences, right? That doesn't include apartments?
Basically, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And other dwelling units.
Right, right. It, it could include some duplexes, triplexes, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
But yes, basically, single-family.
Chairman, you have a question, sir?
Just a quick question, the dollar fifty-one rate, where did that come from?
So, great question. So where it comes from, we take last year's revenue, okay, and ta, and take the total value for this year, you divide, and that's where you get your new rate. And that's, that's as simple as it is. It is a simple mathematic equation. Take last year's revenue, this year's value, divide, and it comes out to, it's technically one point five one five seven, and it's down seventy-two cents from last year.
So you calculate that?
We calculate that here. So we, we, we work with the Division of Property Assessments and the State Board of Equalization on this, which is an extension of the Comptroller's Office. We send those calculations, not just for Hamilton County, but for all the municipalities. We, we, we maintain the values, so we send them the values and what we, the way we calculate value and the revenue, we get the revenue straight from the budget, send that to Nashville, they approve it, send it back to us, and they did that a couple of weeks ago. That's what we do.
Thank you.
And then this will eventually be approved. The State Board of Equalization will sign off on all this and G Y, but we're, we're good to go with it now.
Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Haynes. We appreciate your coming in, all the hard work that you all have been going through. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to make this clarified for the public. The reason you do lower that rate is because state law requires that assessment cannot increase our overall revenues.
That is correct.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's, that, there is a reason behind what you're doing.
Right.
And we appreciate your complying with state law.
It is.
And I want the public to be aware of that if they're not.
It is a constitutional oath and a statutory requirement that the tax rate go down.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Mackey, you have a follow-up, sir?
Real quick. Yeah, they call it, Mr. Haynes, you know, we're talking about taxes, but there's a big piece that goes overlooked, looked. When a person's property taxes go up, I mean, their property values go up, they have to pay more for insurance as well. What's going to address that?
I don't know that I have an answer for that. That is certainly a requirement from financial institutions. If your home, if your, whatever your loan value, they certainly, whatever institution has loaned you money, they're going to want to make sure in an adverse situation that they are reimbursed. So, yeah, that could be a, you're certainly right, that can be a consideration. Insurance is not, I don't want to be the guy that says, not, not my job, but it's not in my lane. That is, we are required to, you know, set values.
Yeah, I know it's not in your lane, but these commissioners have, you know, people who, they're on a tight budget.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more lights, Mr. Haynes, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
And the, the number of phone calls and emails that all of us have gotten in, in your office as well has, has really been immense, to Commissioner Hilton's point. But I also very much get, and I'm sure all of us do, you can only put the information out there so many times, it's, it's almost impossible to reach them all. So if there is a way that we can support you and your office in sending something along with the notifications, just so that people feel better about it and understand it better, I think that will alleviate, it will offset the amount of time and money that's been spent in the communications back to people, just to help with that clarification. I, for one, am more than happy to help support you and your office and what you do there.
We, we, we do want to improve communication, and it is something, and, and it, the Assessor of Properties office is one of those offices, pops up every four years, goes away, you know, and I, but I understand the, the, the suggestion, and we will, we will certainly work on that and make, make sure we can do better. I do want to say, we did receive a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and for the most part, the public did want to understand. Certainly, there were folks that were upset, and we, we all, everybody in this room got angry phone calls or emails or text messages or whatever, but for the most part, folks did want to understand more about the process. And in, in my years, we've had more interaction with the public each reappraisal. Granted, values have gone up each reappraisal, so hopefully it'll be, we'll be better prepared when we get to twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah, well, and please don't take that as a criticism of the office on the communication. This is something, the assessor's office has been around a long time. This is, this is about us getting better as a county and communicating.
Absolutely.
But let me also say that the people that I have spoken to, often I did forward them to your office, and I actually received a number of calls back praising how well your staff responded to them and answered their questions and how they understood, and then they were, you know, they were okay with it, they understood what was really going on. So kudos to your office for the amount of calls and probably emails that they had to forward as well. It's a difficult topic if you don't understand it, and I, I think they did an excellent job in responding back as, as quickly as possible to people. So, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's move on. Six twenty-five dash forty-six, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-six, a resolution adopting a budget of one billion ninety-five million six hundred seventy-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Sure is a really short sentence compared to a lot of these other ones. Mr. Mayor, I have no lights. Any, Mr. Brown or anybody want to add context? I think we all know what it is, but I would certainly offer the opportunity.
I actually don't have any context to add, and we had the hearings last week, which I thought were constructive, had several meetings with, with y'all, and, you know, Lee Browner and his staff had done a whole lot of work, all the way down to a couple of changes that were shared with you all over the last few days, but grateful for all of y'all's help in getting us to this point.
All right. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, let's move on. Six twenty-five dash forty-seven.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-seven, a resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable and civic organizations of Hamilton County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Mackey, you have a light, sir?
My last comment for today, Chair. I was trying to get your attention before the man sat down, and I simply wanted to say, you know, Mr. Mayor, you and I have not always agreed, but I do truly appreciate this spirit in which we have had our conversations, and when this is all said and done, I know I'm not going to get everything guys for, and, and we're going to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I see no further lights. That is our last item on finance, sir. Mr. Chair, if you'd like to take the floor back.
Far the roads in Zoney. Hey, thank you, Chairman Smith. I.
Madam Clerk, could you?
Madam Clark, could you please bundle the, all the roads of those? Resolution six twenty-five fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district roads and to establish speed limits, therefore Harbor Chase Loop and Tellu Roadway. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-one, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district roads and to establish speed limits, therefore James Creek Drive and Elizabeth Ann Way. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-two, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district road and to establish a speed limit, therefore Sir Anderson Court. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-three, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district road and to establish a speed limit, therefore Tailgate Loop Extension.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Mr. Lehman about the, uh, roads, speed limits? Commissioner Sharp?
Just for the sake of clarity to everyone, all of these roads meet county specifications before we're accepting them. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, sir. They're, they're inspected by Development Services and looked over by Highway Department. They do meet our current county subdivision regulation standards.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, that's all we've got for roads. We'll go ahead and go into zoning. If staff, we'll go ahead and come up. I, actually, so what we're, what I plan on to do here, we're going to go ahead and go through these first items before we get to Plan Hamilton. We've got, I believe, four. May, maybe just two, actually. Uh, and then we'll go through those with the normal procedure, asking for opposition. It's just two on the zoning. Madam Clark, please read the six twenty-five dash fifty-four B, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-four B, a resolution to rezone from A-one Agricultural District to R-one Single Family Residential District with conditions for property located at one zero three four zero East Brainerd Road.
May we hear from staff first?
Sure. This is a, this, this is a request to rezone from A-one Agricultural District to R-one Single Family Residential, for residential development. Uh, the zoning area is roughly nine point six acres in size. This property, as well as the property to the south that has the crosshatching on it, is, is to be developed together. So, that number of units within that development will be two hundred and twenty-six. That's a density of two point eight two dwelling inch per acre for the overall site. There's been no zoning history for this particular piece of property, which is in the red box. But to the south, again, this property in the red box will be included as part of the property to the south, which has the crosshatching that was rezoned in twenty twenty-four, from A-one to R-one with three conditions. A traffic impact study, the traffic impact study should look at appropriateness of deceleration lanes and alignment of existing subdivision entrances on this road and require continuous left-hand turn lane. So, those are the three conditions on the property to the south that has the crosshatching on the screen. This is currently a single-family dwelling. The property is highlighted in the yellow on the screen. To the north, a single-unit residential. To the south, is an approved residential PUD that will be developed of townhomes and single-family dwellings. To the west, a single-unit subdivision. It's not showing on the screen, but to the left, just above the single-unit residential, those are under construction as well, the single-family subdivisions. And to the east of this site is vacant land. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site. This is a view north of the site, some single-family dwellings. South of the site, a single-family subdivision. Uh, this is west of the site. This is the area that's under construction that didn't show on the aerial view, but it will be single-family dwellings. Uh, this property is located in the Wild Oak Mountain Plan, which is adopted in twenty nineteen. Uh, the place type recommendation is suburban residential with the primary uses being single-unit detached, which is what this development will be. Here's a closer view of those place type recommendations. Again, it's suburban residential, the natural resources overlay, because there's a flood, floodway along East Brainerd Road. You see that with the crosshatching in green. Uh, this is the site plan submitted with this case. Again, the bigger portion of the south has already been rezoned with a PUD. This is the area in red. Instead of adding single-family dwellings. One thing to note, you see the entrance highlighted in the red. That has changed from the previous plan. We'll get to that in our next case, which is a PUD, but entrance has shifted to the north, where it aligns with the subdivision development to the west of this development. Uh, so this request is compatible with adopted plan. It is compatible with adjacent land uses and development form. It is an extension of existing zoning, which is R-one to the south. Uh, staff recommended a condition carrying over the three conditions to the property to the south, uh, which was approval of residential PUD, dedicate sufficient right-of-way, as determined by the Hamilton County Highway Department, to complete the road widening of three lanes as required along this stretch of Udovalmeas Brainerd. Road widening is required from the frontage of the property and continued in conjunction with the other Pratt project to the south of the site. So, those three conditions staff recommended to carry over. Uh, there was opposition to planning commission from the gentleman to the rear. I think his concerns was flooding in a, in a pond on this property. Planning Commission felt this request was compatible with adopted plan and adjacent land uses and recommends to approve with the same three conditions that I just read. So, this comes to this body from the planning commission with a recommendation to approve with three conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. I'm going to back up. Uh, go ahead and read the PUD. Madam Clark, could you go ahead and read six twenty-five dash fifty-five B, please, since these are tied together?
Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-five B, a resolution granting a special permit for a residential planned unit development amendment with conditions for the properties located at one zero three three zero and one zero three four zero East Brainerd Road.
Uh, Mr. Schultz?
Sure, I'll skip over the other stuff. It's the same, same property. Here's the original PUD plan that was approved last year by this body, twenty twenty-four. Just north of Magnolia Farm, you can see the entrance at that location. Again, that's the old PUD plan. This is the new PUD, PUD plan with that area requested to be rezoned to R-one. The entrance road has shifted. Here's the current PUD. Here's some information in the chart. The current PUD is seventy point five acres. By rezoning this property and adding it to the PUD, the density, the acres goes up by ten acres to eighty point one oh. Still the same number uses, same uses, which is single-unit detached and attached residential. The number of units for attached stays the same at forty-two. The number of single-family actually drops from one eighty-six to one eighty-four. So, the total lot count went from two twenty-eight to two twenty-six. The density also decreased from three point two three to two point eight two. The number of acres for open space increased from eighteen point five to twenty-two point eight four. So, staff recommended to approve as, as it would be compatible with adjacent uses. Staff did have a condition, uh, type A landscape buffer along the East Brainerd Road frontage, except for areas designated for ingress and egress. That's where the townhomes are located, and a type A landscape buffer is thirty feet wide. But again, there was opposition at planning commission. Planning Commission felt this request was compatible with the land use plan and recommends to approve with that same condition of the landscape buffer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Is a applicant present? You want to come down and set your name and address for the record, please?
Ian Blackmore, Pratt and Associates, seventeen thirty-four Dayton Boulevard. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to discuss our next flagship community in the Hamilton County. Last year, y'all approved the, uh, PUD plan for the Reinhardt property. One of the conditions was to do a traffic study and look at the roadway improvements and, and right-of-way dedication. In doing our traffic analysis and in coordination with county staff, it, it was brought to our attention that with the property to the west, which is the Thomas property, which is now, uh, being permitted, it was in the best interest of, for the health and safety of the public to align the two entrances. Uh, we had been in discussion with the adjacent neighbor, uh, but really never to acquire. It was some, some drainage and fencing items. But we brought to his attention the, the traffic pattern opportunity in aligning the two entrances of the Thomas and now the Reinhardt property. So, that's the reason for the major PUD amendment or the PUD, um, addition of this. Generally, when acreage is added, lots are added. That's not the case here. Actually, through engineering design, the lot count has actually gone down. So, this PUD amendment is solely focused on the traffic and the safety of East Brainerd Road.
Thank you, sir. Uh, does anybody have any questions for either staff or the applicant before we hear from opposition?
I'd like to hand out, I just have one request related to the PUD condition. Um, I have a handout if I could.
Yeah, uh, you can hand it to Mr. Shibley there on the end. Pass it down. Commissioner Hilton?
Yes. Well, you and I had discussed this, um, in some detail. I, I was in support of it because you're adding a, a large amount of acreage. The lot count is coming down. It improves the traffic situation. And I want to point out that, uh, through our discussions with Development Services, the Road Department, and, uh, the company that you re, represent, we're doing kind of a unique first-time partnership where y'all are going to participate in the road widening to offset, you know, county, the cost to the county, which is unique. And that's one thing that we have said we would like to do going forward, and I really appreciate that. And also, the landscape buffer is going to match Magnolia across the way, correct?
Correct. So, that's, that's what I have in front of you here. Um, staff presented their recommendation, which were completely agreeable to a landscape buffer. It was just in some of the terminology or the differences between the buffer they mentioned and kind of the aesthetic that exists at Magnolia Farms and what we're looking to continue up both sides of the East Brainerd corridor. So, this is simply just a wording modification to stay in line with the, um, PUD that y'all approved for the Thomas track directly across the street and continue that Magnolia aesthetic of East Brainerd Road.
Yeah, I mean, the, the further we can get these houses off the road, I, I think it, I hate to use the, the term curb appeal, but it makes it more palatable to the residents who are there, who are already dealing with, feel like everything's closing in sometimes. So, I, I hope we can continue this going forward.
I don't know if you can pull back up the plan, but, um, you know, just based on the natural topography and, and surface water buffers, um, you know, if, if the townhomes, um, besides the townhomes, if they're ever built, the single-family, uh, portion, you know, those homes are hundreds of feet away from the road. So, this is just simply verbiage for the landscape buffer we're looking to, uh, to construct.
These townhomes on the former PUD, those are the ones that threw back and forth. We traded a hundred and two thousand foot of commercial strip center that y'all had asked for.
Correct.
For these, this area.
Yeah, that, those, that area there with the dual cul-de-sac and the townhomes, that was what we were proposing to be, the, uh, kind of commercial node for that area and, um, the plethora of subdivisions that are right there.
All right. All right. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Highlander?
Sir, could you explain to the public what a two-inch caliper tree is?
A two-inch caliper tree? Um, so it's at chest height. The trunk of the tree is at least two inches in diameter.
Okay. And how much, how much buffer will that, will it, how much will it expand? How much will it cover eventually when it's at full growth?
Somewhat determined on, uh, the tree type and species. Uh, Magnolia Farms, we went with the southern Magnolias. If any of you are familiar there. So, we're just looking to continue that same Magnolia aesthetic through there. Um, I believe they probably have a twenty-foot wide spread and a forty-foot tall height.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it. I taught agriculture one time, but, but I just want to explain that to the public that while they won't initially, uh, be much of a visual barrier, they eventually will be.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
See no other lights. Uh, anyone here in, uh, like speaking in opposition in regards to this case? I see none. All right. Uh, so, question for staff. There is no issues with the applicant's request?
No. I mean, it matches the conditions across the street. I can provide alternate, uh, resolution for next week.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks, sir. No other questions. We'll move on. Mr. Schultz, one last question. I think we're going to take a break before we get to the, these are the two zoning items that we've been putting off for months that we kind of wanted to collaborate with Plan Hamilton. Do you want to put those before or after?
Well, I, the, I think Commissioner Highlander, when he made the motion, it was to defer these until after Plan Hamilton adoption. So, it probably need to be deferred again.
We'll just keep deferring them?
Yes. I would either, you either take action to deny them, approve them, or defer them out until after Plan Hamilton gets adopted.
Okay. All right. Well, so, we'll, we'll discuss that, and then, so right now, we'll take about a ten-minute break, and then when we come back, we'll, uh, start with Plan Hamilton. Thank you. Ten minutes. Are you? Are you? Okay, we're going to get started in a minute. Please grab your seats. Take your conversations outside, please. Not in the right seat? No, not.
You sit there, what else?
Sure, anybody else? Hey. All right, guys, let's go ahead and have a seat. Let's go and have a seat. Let's get started with zoning. Is my microphone working? Is my microphone working? Okay. Please, please, everybody, everybody, take a seat. Take your conversations outside. We are getting started right now. Madam Clerk, we've got two resolutions here that we are going to punt for about 30 days. It's the two resolutions 625-57 and 625-58. We will put those on, defer those for 30 days, okay? And so now we will get started with Resolution 625-56. Madam Clerk, please.
Resolution 625-56, a resolution for the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to review Plan Hamilton and proposed amendment and act on the proposed amendments and provide the Regional Planning Commission an amended Plan Hamilton for Planning Commission adoption of a regional comprehensive plan.
All right, well, we, Karen, I appreciate you being here and putting together this presentation for us. I was hoping that my fellow commissioners, at least my committee members, will join us here. I think they've got lunch back there and they might be forgetting about us. But I suppose you just go ahead and get started. I'm not going to, we're all adults here. I'm going to go back there and get them.
I've encouraged them to get out here.
Okay, and I can also share the full presentation, too, at the end.
And again, like we were discussing before, please be very descriptive on how we got here up to this point, not necessarily up to the last two years of this process, but basically what happened in the last month's Planning Commission meeting.
Yes, sir. And I'm Karen Rennick, Deputy Administrator of the Chedden-Gahimah County Regional Planning Agency. Also, Brian Schultz and Pam Blazer from RPA are here. Then, of course, we partnered with Nathan January on the project. So if there's questions, they will come up and answer it. And also, certainly, lots of other people were involved. So today, as you advised, Mr. Chauncey, the focus of this presentation is the plan status and Planning Commission action and what Planning Commission has sent on to County Commission. There's a full presentation. We can look at any of those slides if you'd like. So Plan Hamilton is a guide for physical, future, future physical development in incorporated Hamilton County. So it's full of information, research about development, development status, development drivers. But the focus of this presentation and one of the main uses of the plan is to inform zoning and rezoning decisions. And that's what this presentation will focus on. The plan does note that we're really looking at five years for Plan Hamilton, that the goal is to update Plan Hamilton every five years. So keep that in mind when we're thinking about, this is recommendations for the next five years. So Plan Hamilton is an overall term for a series of five-area plans shown there on the screen. And we'll use kind of the name and the number interchangeably. They all have the, generally, the same structure shown to the right, having these plans are informed by both research and analysis and public input to come up with policies, policies and recommendations. Exception is Area 9, which we heard from the Area 9 Committee deviates a little bit from the above format. The, going to focus on the policy and place type sections of the plan, just to move more thoroughly. And that's where a lot of the discussion has come about. So we do have a map of, kind of as I talk through this, showing my approach. So the plan policy, much of that future land use development policy is mapped in the plan. What you have is a composite map of all the area plans combined. And we used to call these future land use maps or land use maps. They've evolved a little bit into place types, which have a little bit more of a robust description of what is going on in the area. But I might switch back and forth occasionally, call them future land use, because that really is directing the future land use. So non-residential development, and this is a very general, broad overview of what's happening with non-residential development in the plan. Generally, it's clustered, retail, office, non-residential uses are clustered. And we're calling them centers. These are really mostly areas where we already have development of that nature. Some of them grow a little bit. Some of them grow more than others. Some of them are just really acknowledging that we already have kind of a non-residential node or center in different areas throughout the county. So again, trying to move pretty quickly, residential growth is primarily identified through the countryside residential or suburban residential place type. So just you have the plan in front of you. The suburban, the residential place types are in yellow, different shades of yellow. And you can, the example on the screen is Middle Valley Lakeside, which has both suburban and countryside residential on it. That suburban's at darker yellow. And then on your maps, you can see both those non-residential and residential place types. So not all the place types are applied to each area. For example, Middle Valley, I don't think has any village center or crossroads, but you do see the plant, the Sequoia plant, pop up there with that industrial place type. But the full place type spectrum can be seen and is identified on the map that you have in front of you. I also mentioned that place types are shown on the map, but then also described more fully. So suburban residential is shown on the slide. This is really laying out a future land use pattern. There's really those great suburban residential developments we have throughout our county and describes those as a maximum density of five dwelling units an acre. Countryside residential is a place type that seeks to balance residential growth with maintaining our rural area in character. So the plan recommends development standards to provide landscape buffers along roads and around the perimeter of new developments. It also touches on floodplains and steep slopes. And then countryside residential is associated with two maximum residential densities. So countryside residential has a 2.5, a maximum density 2.5. And then also two in the maps, they're shown. It is harder to see on your maps. I think you kind of have a hatch where that's shown. It's a little bit clear in each individual plan, but the countryside residential has those two, two types. So the resolution on the County Commission agenda is not for plan adoption. So the resolution coming from Planning Commission and on your agenda is not for plan adoption. It's rather review and direction for Planning Commission. Of course, you know, County Commission can do whatever you choose. We're first to explain why and then explain the resolution on the agenda. So state law guides the development and overall regional or comprehensive plan. As you know, our planning and zoning powers come from state law. And so the TCA states it is the function and duty of a regional planning commission to make and adopt a general regional plan for the physical development of the territory of the region. We have always, to my knowledge, have a general regional plan to meet state law requirements. We had a plan in 2016. We updated it in 2018 and 2021. So the Planning Commission does have the required adopted general plan that is required by state law. The intention of Plan Hamilton has become that new updated general plan to give us that new updated policy for physical development in the county. TCA also speaks to the process of the county adopting a regional plan. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this. I mean, I'm trying to move quickly, but part of the process is related to this requirement. The county, and I'm reading just excerpts from TCA 133304, "The county legislative body by resolution may adopt a general regional plan." So Planning Commission has to adopt the general regional plan. In this case, Plan Hamilton. The county legislative body may adopt the plan. If the legislative, and again, I have truncated the language, if the legislative body adopts the general regional plan in the form of a resolution by the county, then any land use decisions thereafter made by the legislative body, Planning Commission, or Board of Zoning Appeals, must be consistent with the general regional plan. So I'll truncate that a little bit more to say, if the County Commission adopts the plan by resolution, land use decisions after that by County Commission and Planning Commission must be consistent with the general regional plan. So we have been proceeding, and the process is proceeding, and these slides are proceeding, as if the Board of Commissioners will adopt the plan by resolution. And that is a decision by County Commission. We have been proceeding as if that will be the case. So this is a probably hard-to-read flow chart, just kind of saying, we're thinking, this is staff directing the activity to have an updated policy, but meeting state law. Planning Commission held a public hearing and passed a recommendation, a resolution on the County Commission. Obviously, we're here in June. The cycle here is that Planning Commission would get that feedback and guidance from County Commission to adopt the plan that meets County Commission policies. And then going back to County Commission for the final adoption under state law, we can discuss this further if needed. And so really, it is confusing that the schedule's intended to do those two things, which is meet the state law requirements and have a plan adopted by Planning Commission that reflects County Commission goals and policies. So the language on the screen is the resolution from your agenda broken down into four parts, just to try to make it a little bit easier. And so review Plan Hamilton, proposed amendments, act on proposed amendments, and then provide feedback back to Planning Commission. The next few slides will speak specifically to these four items, just as a framework for discussion. So again, the resolution says, first step, review Plan Hamilton, Plan Hamilton documents. So then on the website, since prior to action from Planning Commission, so, and they can all be accessed there and along with their associated maps. If anyone wants a paper copy, we're happy to provide you one or a paper copy of one or all of these. The second step, again, from coming from that Planning Commission resolution is to review proposed amendments. I clarify here that we have staff and Planning Commission amendments. We didn't want to keep updating documents. We had, wanted to have a moment. They're done on the website, heading to Planning Commission. We caught kind of a typo on the first item here. This is really rewording of an item, just to help later. And then the second item, and I'm going to read this out, and this is coming from staff to Planning Commission requesting this be added to, to the plan. "So the area plan recommendations and place types are not intended to limit development during the subdivision plating process for properties owned R1 residential district or other residential zoning district or having a special exceptions permit." or having a special exceptions permit for planned unit development prior to plan adoption. The subdivision of such land should follow the Hamilton County subdivision regulation standard procedures. So this is because we do have R1 zone properties and our countryside residential general description areas. And this is just noting that the intention is if you have, you're zoned and you're platted, you're zoned, that the intention is to send through the subdivision plating process. The third item, and this is came from a public, the public hearing at planning commission. There was a mention of some language examples from other jurisdictions that weren't preferred, that felt that were not applicable here. Planning commission's recommendation is to remove the appendix. Those items are not in the appendix. They're in chapter five. We think the intent was to remove them from chapter five. The appendix also has a memo from the Chamber of Commerce on the importance of manufacturing to our community. That's also in the appendix. I don't think that was intended to be removed. That's just inadvertent and we could perhaps correct that as we move forward. Step three, and I have a few more slides here. Act on the home builders amendment. So again, breaking up those four steps in the planning commission agenda, excuse me, planning commission resolution is noted. Planning commission had a public hearing. The Home Builders Association of Greater Chattanooga submitted written comments and then also spoke at the hearing. The recommendation from planning commission to county commission is to act on these changes. And the act was, was part of the motion. I'll note, these weren't discussed in much detail at planning commission. They moved them on to county commission. And the, there's quite a few pages of amendments and they should be attached to the resolution. If you want a printed out copy of that packet, we're certainly happy to give that to you. And they, again, they're not coming with a recommendation, but I do want to do a summary. So amendment process, do want to kind of do a summary and then do dig down on two of the items that I think have our most interest to quite a few people. Excuse me. So the amendment process, this is my summary of the home builders comments. So I am summarizing and using some of their language. So to let you know, the home builders might want to comment on that, but this is my summary. The amendment process is extremely, extremely restrictive and undefined. Density, they believe that a more appropriate density is, there's a different density range for sewer decentralized. And we'll speak to that in a moment. New regulations, they have concern that new regulations are planned for or mandated in the plan and that they should be the subject of a separate process involving all stakeholders. And just concerned about overly broad statements on a variety of topics. So focusing on those top two items, the amendment process and the density. The, this is coming back to, again, this is the county commission decision about adopting the plan under state law. Just as a reminder, if county commission adopts the regional plan by res, excuse me, Plan Hamilton or the regional plan by resolution, then land use decisions thereafter have to be consistent with the general regional plan. So county commission can choose to amend the plan and then land use can, decisions can be in alignment with that. Plan Hamilton says, we'll consider request to amend the plan, area plan every six months, starting six months after plan adoption. The home builders have requested or have noted that rezoning should continue to be heard on a monthly basis and plan amendment should follow automatically. Where we do have plenty of rezoning cases that could be in line with the plan. These would be ones that do not align with the plan recommendations. Second is the density. Plan Hamilton, as you know, countryside residential has two maximum of two dwelling units an acre or 2.5 dwelling units an acre. And they're identified on the plan and it's kind of the plan location for those is a combination of different infrastructure sewer, road, school, fire. And so that's how they got mapped on the plan. The home builder's proposal is that two dwelling units an acre on septic system and three dwelling units an acre where sewers available or decentralized sewer system can be used. I think their proposal also says something about new technologies as part of that. Okay, and just a quick series of slides. This is using Area 9 since they spoke about their area. This is kind of showing how that density calculation will come into play. So for the current plan in Area 9, this is suburban residential, up to five dwelling units an acre. Highlighting up to two units an acre. Certainly, much of that area is maximum density two units an acre. And then areas of 2.5, 2.5 dwelling units an acre. So the proposal, just kind of how that would look on the ground with the home builders request to change is two units for septic systems. Across that, the areas highlighted, remember those are, I mean, Area 9 currently are two or 2.5. And then three dwelling units an acre for sewer avail, if sewer is available or decentralized system or a new technology. I mean, I encourage, if I've got the new technology wrong, I encourage the home builders to correct me, apologize. So last step, just I think two more slides after this. Then this is the, the fourth item on the resolution is to provide the regional planning commission amended Plan Hamilton for planning commission adoption. And this is really planning commission requesting for county commission to finalize items and send the plan back to planning commission to formally adopt the plan. This process is set up so that the plan adopted by planning commission that required, state law required a regional plan, that it be in line with county commission's, you know, division for future growth. And then planning commission will adopt that formal plan. So overall, this is a, goal is to have an updated policy to guide future development. The current resolution is for county commission to give guidance to planning commission on Plan Hamilton so they can adopt it in line with county commission's goals for development. And also I put a generic other statement on here, depending on commission's desired actions, whether that be adoption or whatever other changes the commission should so choose. And that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions and/or anyone else on the team can answer questions.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
So, so many questions. I just wanted, like I said, just wanted optics to be clear amongst the rest of my fellow commissioners up here, exactly what we're doing. And it is a bit, a little bit unconventional as to how we've done things in the past with our rezoning items. Traditionally, the planning commission will make a recommendation and then we come here and we take action on it. And then so it appears that the planning commission last month did not adopt the plan. However, they made, which I say was a recommendation to this body to review and take action on amendments that were provided by the home builder. Is that correct?
I think that is a good summary. And really, planning commission is guided by staff. And the intention is to, really, staff's overall intention was to make sure that planning commission's required plan meets the, is in line with county commission. So that is how kind of the system came up in that. And so planning commission, there were a couple resolutions. So planning commission could have had done a couple of things. They went with this route, which to say, I process that as we're generally good with Plan Hamilton. I'm hoping that it, they're accept the staff comments are acceptable. Those are kind of some more, and that we're not real. You county commission, let us know what you want to do with us. Home builder comments or any other comments. So you have lots of other public comments today. And then let us know how, how we planning commission should proceed. As you know, planning commission's an appointed body. And I think we just did not want to have a mismatch between county commission and what they want as their future policy and planning commission. So this extra steps kind of sends it on with some comments and thoughts with the idea of looping it back to planning commission to finalize.
Karen, I understand you want us all to be harmonious in the decisions we make here, right?
Correct. That is a much better summary. Yes.
Good luck. So in, in talking to our county attorney, this body has the right to go ahead and capture this, take action next week and vote on this and be done with it if we choose to.
That's correct. There is a requirement under state law, the, for advertisement. And Brian did advertise it, send a legal notice that county commission could vote on the action.
And it wouldn't have any bearings on any legality issues that the RPA has or this whole process? If this body was to take action and vote on it next week, again, it wouldn't have any bearings on any issues that you're having with your process?
We would send it back to planning commission. Planning commission then would have that adopted document. We would have them adopt that as the regional plan. And then there's some requirements about sending that to the state and communicating back, but we would try to have that process into planning commission next month.
And I'll, and I'll let, open this up. I just got one quick question. Could you just quickly go over the amendments that the, and I say home builders. It's, it's more than the home builders. It's realtors, inspectors, plumbers, electricians, carpenters, everybody in the construction industry is, is here. So could you tell me what those?
Yes.
Amendments were exactly? And can maybe compare.
Sure. And so the amendment, I'll start with the, the, maybe perhaps the two cleaner ones. Plan Hamilton has a language in there that says, we'll consider request to amend the area plan every six months. I think the, the, well, everyone you mentioned, and I'm going to just mention the change. The change would be that plan amendments could occur monthly. That would be my, my understanding of what this request is. Instead of waiting six months, if I had a zoning case that did not align with the plan and I had to do a plan amendment, instead of waiting six months, a change could be, of course, quarterly, monthly, every mother month, but the request here is monthly.
And that's actually two separate processes. If we had a zoning request that was in line with Plan Hamilton, that, that would kind of go into one category. But if we got a zoning request that is not in line with Plan Hamilton, then we have to amend the plan.
That's correct.
To appease this one applicant. And if we were to amend the plan to appease this one applicant, that opens it up for everybody who's forward. I mean, every, everybody who was, who applies for something similar to whatever was we amended also gets the same treatment if that was in fact amended.
The, I think one of the comments from regarding this change was there's, you know, that hasn't been fully built out. I think our understanding, talking to other jurisdictions that do this, is that there's a clear process for when the plan is amended, you're looking at items that are kind of site specific perhaps to that area or why would a change be done? So it's almost to the level of a zoning case review, really looking at that one area. So it's not necessarily perceived as a blanket change that anyone else who wants a similar change would get it.
And I'm, and I'm sorry for interrupting you. I think you just want to wrap up with the, the other amendments and then I'll shut up and I'll let the other commissioners talk.
No, please. So the other one is density. So as I mentioned, the place types, that future land use, it's shown on the map and there's written text. So in this case, if there was a change, we would process this change if given guidance or how it would look would be on the map. It would reflect the language for two dwelling units on septic, three dwelling units on sewer decentralized system. And then we, we have a density table in each of the plans. The density table would change as would the text describing that place type. And so that is how that would get changed or whatever happens. That would be how that would get changed. And I think that is primarily addressing the density concern. And then the last two, just to go back, are new regulations and overly broad. I had a harder time summarizing both of these on a slide. So there are new regulations, it does talk, for example, it might talk about developing a vegetative, revegetating steep slopes. And this is my example of how that would work. That, that it could be that any, you know, I, I don't know what the desire would be or the desire could be that any new regulations, anything that goes into a resolution, any new regulations needs to have an open process. We always do that at planning commission in here, but that could be an example of how that could be addressed. And then overly broad statements, there's several things that are just of concern, but I, I don't know specifically how to address those.
Okay. Have any other comments here for staff? No lights. Thank you, Karen. So the, the broad statements, and there was some language in there. You said you don't really know how to kind of address that?
They're on the, let me pull up, if you can, just give me a moment on, and they're on the resolutions, but I think this is the one that has a, on what we were provided for the home builders comments. Like you said, it sounds like certainly getting feedback from others. And give me one. I think one of them has a bucket of nine, eight or nine different things. And I apologize for not having that. So, and it's, the overly broad comments are, they have them detailed on a table that is mentioned. And the table at the end talks about where in the plan it is and the proposed change, the overly broad statements. And I can just hit on them briefly. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And there's two in Area 7, one in Area 8, two in Area 9, two in Area, and three in Area 13. And an example would be the majority of future development in Area 7 should be located within the incorporated town boundaries of Signum Mountain and Town of Walden. That was an example under the overly broad statements, but it looks like there's eight or nine specific examples provided.
Commissioner Holland?
Thank you, Chairman. Karen, thank you for your diligent work on this and your staff. Excuse me. I know the, the group that the mayor charged, the mayor and the chairman charged with, with making some adoptions. And I, I, again, I'll reiterate that I appreciate all their work. They originally wanted changes only to be made yearly, annually. And they did go to six months. How difficult will it be for you as staff if changes are made monthly as opposed to by annually?
We reached out to, so Knoxville has a similar for Knox County. And they processed those quarter, pardon. Right. So we got guidance from them on how long the process takes. And in my take on the matter, it's very similar to writing a staff report. So, you know, if it's a, it's more involved, it takes us a lot longer to write a staff recommendation or not. But I would, I would say the similar effort, and I'm looking at Brian for a nod, similar effort to writing a staff report because you're pulling together a lot of information to try to form the plan amendment.
One of the reasons we're, we're looking at making a policy is so that we can stick to it fairly closely. And I hate to see it changed too often. And I do appreciate your offer to give it to us in print. I have tried to follow it with the computer and sometimes it's hard to follow. It's much easier to go through with print and then make highlights. And I think that would help us. It's, it's hard for me to look at all the, the lengthy amendments that, and try to make an ethical decision on it. Thank you very much.
We can print both copies of the plan and the other materials that have been provided and we'll drop that off at the office.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Karen, you've been around a while and you've gotten to know these commissioners. And you have a feeling right on the front end whether people on this commission are pro or anti-growth.
Is that a question?
And, and I appreciate you being cautious because where I'm headed is towards the Hamilton plan. Do you think they are anti-growth or pro-growth?
I will start to say that it is a well, it's intended to be a well-informed plan with plenty of public comment. And so again, we're looking at five years. The plan does note, and I'm, and I'm hopefully narrowing in on an answer to your question. The plan does note, and we did present a planning commission, that there's, the plan identified over $130 million transportation project. And the plan does, and I'm quoting this so I don't misquote it, for sewer capacity that existing capacity and available financial support substantially limits new sewer availability in the unincorporated county in the short and midterm. So this is intended, the plan is, I guess I want to focus on, we're talking about a five-year plan. We will, if it's intended to be updated every five years, we'll have to get started maybe three or four years to update the plan. And I know that's not. And it's also, we are developing a plan for county, for, for the county. So we as planners, host meetings, provide research, but that is the county commission's, you know, the county and the county commission's decision on that plan. So we are here to facilitate a process and inform that process. That is ultimately the guidance from county commission on, on where that plan heads. And I think that's what planning commission is asking for too. So I know it's not a complete answer, but I think that's the planning commission saying, please let us know what the appropriate action is so we can adopt a plan that's in line with the, the future development, desired. with the future development, desired future development.
Karen, just a couple of clarifying questions. One, we're using the term countryside residential, that's A1, is that right?
It is, primarily A1, and I heard a comment, and I would like to, in Area Nine, we have 56% of the county is in A1 zoning, and then we do have a, I have the number 78% of the county, of the unincorporated counties in countryside residential, but there's a mismatch in that number in that countywide includes areas, I think of incorporated areas, and so I can give you that number, but yes, you're correct, there is some alignment. I do want to note, that's why the language is up here for the, excuse me, for the staff put in here. So countryside residential does include areas that are zoned R1. It is saying that in the future, this area is really, for those next five years, we are looking at more of a countryside residential pattern here. But because we do have areas that are zoned R1, this statement in here is an acknowledgement that properties have gone through the process, they've been approved for R1 by county commission, and could still head to plating. And so this is kind of acknowledging that there are R1 zoned areas in that countryside residential.
And so those still stay R1 for the purposes of what is allowed by zoning?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, that's, I wanted to be sure. The other part, similarly, you said it's two or 2.5.
Correct.
Is that also because of mixed zoning and what is countryside residential?
So two or 2.5, and perhaps Area Nine is a good example of that, is the, so 2.5 is really looking at kind of all those development patterns. In this case, there is a little bit more capacity south of Mahan Gap on Ottawa Georgetown. There's a little bit more capacity along Highway 58. And so, yeah, sewer, that's correct, sewer, and then the, you know, there's other factors that play, but this is for Area Nine, it's saying those are a little bit more of the growth areas. The rest of the area is not slated for, is slated for two.
Okay.
So this doesn't quite take that up to Mahan Gap, it stays a little south of Mahan Gap in this example.
Okay. And then also on the slide, you were talking about zoning and whether we would adopt this on a monthly basis, or make amendments on a monthly basis, or every six months. How, just to clarify again, how would this impact our current zoning process? Like if it's already, you mentioned two different things, that it follows the plan or doesn't follow the plan. So examples would be what?
Sure. So we'll go back to the lakeside, Middle Valley area. And so an example here would be suburban residential south of Sequoia Access Road. So in this example, there was a rezoning request to R1. That is a, with a density of five units an acre. The plan does support that, and that would move forward. That would not be a plan amendment, because that is in line with the plan. So an example might be a gas station somewhere along, I'm trying to, Middle Valley Road. That is not in line with the plan, it is not at a node, designated node for retail use, that is not in line with the plan. So in that case, staff would say it's not in line with the plan, we would need to set up a process for the review, and that zoning case and plan amendment could go at the same time. But the intention is, instead of every month, and Plan Hamilton's intention instead of every month is that we should bundle those and wait and do plan amendments, not every month, but think about those and process the plan amendment and the zoning request. Plan Hamilton's recommending six months, I think there's a desire to change that.
So if it does, if a zoning request does follow the plan, that would continue to occur just like it does today, we hear on a monthly basis?
That's correct, and I would think that a condition, so this example, if the plan's recommending a max density of five units an acre for R1, that staff would, if the applicant is not already, staff would recommend a density, or talk to the applicant about a condition of maximum density of five units an acre to line with the plan to move forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Baker? Commissioner Baker?
Thank you. Couple things. One is, I'd like to call someone up, may I?
Sure.
Kurt? Want to come up and see us? This is Kurt Wells, he's an engineer on Signal. If you would just, well, first you have to give your name and address, and then just tell us about the 700 acres.
Kurt Wells, 1848 Vandergriff. There is currently a 700 acres of R1 zoning off of Corral, Sawyer, and Vandergriff. Green Tech has already started subdividing lots there. So, I mean, we were looking at, you know, 2,100 houses potentially, near the top of Roberts Mill.
How many per acre?
At two, or no, at three, I'm sorry, along with the other subdivisions that have already been approved.
Without septic?
Without septic.
Or sewer, without sewer?
Without sewer, yeah. So, I mean, you would double the traffic on Roberts Mill? I mean, there's no way the infrastructure, 2011 TDOT did a study on replacing one of the roads up Signal, and came up with a price tag of $170 million. So, I mean, that's never going to happen. The commission adopted the Walden area plan in 1997, which said Roberts Mill was going to be over capacity in 2011, which was 14 years ago. There's no money, there's state money, there's $12 million for retaining walls next year on the Signal roads up and down the mountain, and there's $12 million for repaving in 2050. And just to clarify the, where these, you know, Plan Hamilton population numbers come from the 2050 Regional Transportation Plan, which predicted a growth of 200 people in the unincorporated areas of Signal Mountain. And already in four months, the Regional Planning Commission has approved houses for four times that population. So, I mean, these numbers, the increased density, you know, don't make any sense up there.
Okay. First off, it was an impromptu call up, so I appreciate Kurt's been very helpful, as has been Brian Laskok, Tommy Farmer, a number of people. What I guess we're trying to point out is, the conditions are different. He also brought up the topic of mines, which there are a number of mines, including my backyard. We started this process three-plus years ago, under Mayor Coppinger, and then we got a kind of a timeout, so that Plan Hamilton kind of came into being, wherever Karen went, where Karen go, yeah, yeah. And, but Karen's been part of this process, when we started before Plan Hamilton. And so we've got a meeting on the 17th with the community again. I bet we've probably had in three and a half years, I don't know, eight meetings, but this is an important one. So I'm probably going to be reluctant to vote on the 18th, depending on how the meeting These recent developments have really caused concern that we do need to get the plan put in place, but it's got to be right. You know, I'm for development, but it's got to be done right, you know, and we've got issues, be it sewer, roads, schools, and they'll all be at this meeting on the 17th. So I just think, you know, and I guess prior to Dan's leaving, you know, he said, you know, he wants to get this done this year. I don't, I don't see the rush for the 18th. I'd like to get the plan in place, I want to make sure it's done right. I like the ability to be able to tweak it again, as, you know, because we're not perfect. But I just wanted to get an educated perspective up here about the issues that we're facing, and how it's come to the forefront of our need to have a better plan, at least in Area Seven. And I know, I've heard all the other issues, and certainly I appreciate that, I've read all the emails about roads and everything else from folks in Area, what's your, Area 11? Nine, nine. Yeah, so I mean, I read it all, and I appreciate it, and I just think, you know, it's incumbent upon us to do the right thing, working with the Home Builders Association to make sure that we're working together, not against each other, that's why we had that meeting a couple of months ago. I don't know that I've seen results from it, but we'll take as much time as we need. Kurt, thank you for coming up and expressing an educated comment, yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Do you have a question? Comment? No? No one else? Commissioner Smith?
Thanks, sir. Just one quick follow-up on the, on the language of the resolution itself. It talks about the resolution for the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to review Plan Hamilton and proposed amendment, and act on the proposed amendments, that's part of it. Can you clarify, Karen, if you know? If this was to be voted on, and let's say it passes in its current form, does that mean that the amendments of the home builders are incorporated, or do we need to act separately, Plan Hamilton and act separately on the amendments that have been proposed?
I would say separately also. The Planning Commission used different language in making the motion, and settled on act on the plan amendments. And I think that is just a more formal action on what is supposed to happen to the amendments when they get it back. So I would think for clarity, and this is, I realize in putting together the slides, that this resolution could have been read or written, which is why I tried to clarify proposed amendment, staff and Planning Commission amendments, that those are ones that are moving forward, or say, I would process as a recommendation to approve, and then the home builder changes are a separate thing, and so I would think separately.
Okay. I mean, that would be my preference as well, but that's not what's before us, that's not what's on our agenda.
That's correct.
So it needs to change by next week? Or, I mean, we need to break this one into two? Do we need to do it next week and change how it goes? I mean, it's on there as a single agenda item, and in my opinion, it does not need to be?
Well, if you don't mind, maybe jump in here. I can see what you mean by separately, but it's, essentially it's one. I mean, the amendment is changing the plan. So if we're going to vote on a resolution, for example, if I were to say, hey, I vote to Plan Hamilton, I vote to approve Plan Hamilton, and I'd like to include all three of the home builders amendments, that would be one resolution, right?
And perhaps, just to be, I think that is possible, and I don't know that I'm the best person to answer this, I think just to be, so we are very clear on, because this resolution is, there's a lot going on in one resolution here, there's four different actions. And so if, I guess as a staff member would just request that whatever county commission does, to be very clear on what those actions are, because we'll amend the plans accordingly. And so for this example of approving plan, this is an example, Plan Hamilton's a go, we're good with staff changes and Planning Commission changes, that's easy, we can amend the plan to do that. And then if there is action on the home builder requesting changes, just so we're clear in whether that's one resolution, or just so we know what changes are expected from county commission to us to make in the plan.
May I get your question answered? Clear as mud?
Yeah, clear as mud. And, I mean, yes and no, right? I mean, that's, if it stays in this current form, I don't think it's very clear what it is.
Correct, I agree with you.
So I, I would prefer for it, I'm not going to vote on it in its current form, and at least not in favor of it. So I would definitely like to see it in a way that it's very clear the actions that we're taking, in my opinion. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Is that something you would like us to amend a resolution and place an amended resolution on the agenda, or is there something that's an action that we should be taking?
I mean, for me, I'd rather see a resolution for Plan Hamilton.
Okay.
And a resolution for amendment to said plan.
Okay.
That's, that's my answer. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but that's, that's how I would prefer. I'd be happy to get advice from the attorney's office as well as to how that should be done. I just think it needs to be really clear, very clear what actions that we're taking. If it's all in one, and I don't like the home builders amendment, then I'm voting no on Plan Hamilton, but I support Plan Hamilton, right? I don't want to, I don't want it to come across that way.
Okay. So then, and then proceeding, it would be a resolution to adopt Plan Hamilton, and that would be Plan Hamilton as, that's been on the website for two, two months. And then a resolution to adopt Plan Hamilton with the following changes, and those would lay out both the staff and, excuse me, staff and Planning Commission changes, and the proposed home builder changes.
I would say so. And then, Mr. Janeway, did you have some clarification?
I just had a suggestion. You know, every month when we review zoning cases, we have an A and a B. It could be that we have an A that is Plan Hamilton as presented to Planning Commission, and a B that is Plan Hamilton plus the home builder amendments. And you guys decide which one you want to take action on.
Yeah, I want to see it in two. I don't, yeah, thank you.
Okay. We will draft language, and then we will see if that meets your needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, before you run off.
Yes, sir.
To that point, did we, did we come to a consensus on what we want to see next week as far as an A or a B?
Two separate resolutions. Not A, B, two separate resolutions.
Okay. Now, I think for me, I think Mr. Janeway had a good point, I mean, just voting on an A or a B, because I don't know if I would be okay with Plan Hamilton if it wasn't for the other one. So it's hard for me to vote on Plan Hamilton just the way it is, without knowing what, what lies after that with the amendments. So for me, I would prefer an A and a B. So that way, if A, for example, A is for Plan Hamilton to include the home builder amendments, if it gets six votes, it passes. If it don't, we'll go to B, that's Plan Hamilton just the way it is. It's what I'm envisioning being the most streamlined process here, I guess, unless somebody wants to piecemeal it, keep piecemealing it together and making more amendments. Any other comments? Commissioner Holland?
I appreciate what the chairman says, and I understand where he's coming from. For clarity, it would be much easier for me to look at, I like what Mr. Smith said, to go with, with one, and then we can change it if we choose to, if we choose to, to accept Plan Hamilton, and then we can make the amendments if we choose to do that. Really, if I may, Chairman, I'd like to ask for a legal opinion, would it be appropriate for us to take a poll right now, or is that be ethical, legal, or allowed?
Commissioner, I would not recommend you take a poll, but I think you can tell by consensus of what statements commissioners have made, where this is going, but I think that the easiest answer is to have two separate resolutions. The one with Plan, Plan Hamilton, and the other one with the home builders recommendations contained in it, but also realize the commission could finally vote on a third resolution that has a bit of this and a bit of that. So it's got to come up from the discussion, and then you come up with a final product. So you could start with the two, and in the end, don't be surprised if you don't have a third one that has some of this and some of that. Take action on this part.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. My understanding, because I was at this meeting, was that the Planning Commission adopted Plan Hamilton with the amendments. Am I mistaking that? That's what they sent to us, and that's what's on our resolution, is that right?
It can, it can be debated on how they, how they presented their recommendation to us. It's confusing. It, that's the way I see it. I think that's the way I interpreted it.
That's the way I interpreted it also, that the Planning Commission included the amendments to Plan Hamilton and voted on it affirmatively.
No.
No?
They did not.
They didn't vote.
No.
That's what I thought, because, I mean, that's what we have here, is, that's what's on the agenda, right?
To take action.
Right. So we're supposed to have, I don't understand why, I mean, we can make amendments, anybody up here can make amendments, we can make two amendments, right? Can we only make two amendments? Is that, I guess that's a question for the attorney, if I may. Attorney, according to our rules, how do we go about making amendments? according to our rules, how do we go about making amendments? What are the restrictions to us making amendments?
Two amendments at a time.
Two amendments at a time?
No more than two amendments at a particular time.
Okay.
I mean, you can vote, two amendments, and then you can follow up with two more amendments.
Okay. But also, we're supposed to have a full week where the public has seen our resolution before we vote on it, right? So then the way to go about doing it was to take our resolution and move from here on this resolution. Is that not, is that not how we do things on every other time? I mean,
I'm.
No? No one wants to answer? I mean, that's how we do things.
I agree with that. I'm on board with that.
Right. So like, if a commissioner's not happy with this, then they're welcome to make a motion to amend. So I don't understand why we got to go through the whole process again. Now, that's what I don't understand. We have rules in place. We got a resolution on the agenda. Somebody wants to make an amendment to it, or maybe I'm missing something here. Okay. All right.
Yeah, so I'd.
That was my question, Chairman. I just, I don't know if there's, seems like we're maybe over-complicating things here. I'm not sure.
Well, I started the meeting off saying it's a little unconventional, what we usually do, and it was confusing. I try to make it less confusing as possible, but we do have to get to public comments, guys. So if it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and get that out of the way. Got two quick lights. Like I said, we got plenty of time to discuss now or after. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm concerned. We're talking about many things at one time. And in my opinion, and this is my opinion alone, I like the idea of having two different resolutions. I think we should stop calling them amendments, though, because I think if we have two separate resolutions, one includes one group of information, one includes the other group of information, then we still have the freedom to have two amendments for whichever resolution that we choose to amend. Correct? Okay. So if we have an A and a B that's been discussed today, if we have an A and a B, this is one version, this is another version, and then we still want to make amendments that give us an opportunity to have two more amendments. So, I mean, that, I hope that doesn't simplify it too much, but that's pretty much, well, one at a time, right, one amendment at a time. But also, in the amendments, there's lots that could be included. You know what I mean? If you had your list in front of you, if you had to amend it, all of that could be included in one amendment. But that, and that's just parliamentary procedure. But here's what I'm concerned about. I have some unincorporated areas in my district, small portions, and it's not in Area 9, okay? But here's the problem that we have to consider, and this is a big problem, in my opinion, is if we're not careful here, what we're going to do is we're going to force the growth that's coming, whether we want it or not, because of the industry that we're trying to attract to be here. So if we're not careful, and if we're not handling the growth in a smart manner, and let's call it smart growth, if we're not handling it in a smart manner, we're not going to be able to put a smart plan together for the infrastructure, because like what was done in 2017, this body put a plan together to put a sewer treatment plant in, and then later, after the revenue was identified, killed it. And now we're at least 10, maybe 15 years behind from where that was in 2017. Because it'll take us 10 years, even if the money was identified today, it'd take us 10 years just to put the plant up, and then there's no sewer lines to the pipe. We still have to put the infrastructure in and put the sewer line there. All this growth talk's a good problem to have, but there's something that's not being discussed here. And all of us in the room, our parents, or most of all, us are parents in one way or another, are going to be parents. And we've worked really hard as a county, all of us, to bring Volkswagen and Amazon and all these wonderful vendors and all these wonderful suppliers. We've worked really hard to grow our county and grow our financial base, right? We have nowhere for workforce development to live. And that's what's driving, as Marty Haynes said today, our assessments are through the roof. Well, that's what's driving our assessments up, is because there's no inventory for these future employees. And I'll use my family as an example. I have four children that are young adults, one married, one getting married, one, I don't know if they'll ever get married, but he's still out on his own. And then I got a young man that's, I think, is going to date for a living. But, but, but my point in saying all that is, eventually, mom and dad's going to be empty nesters. And the problem is, there's nowhere for these children to go, because everything is so doggone expensive. So if we don't get this plan right, and we don't allow the growth to happen, and have it smart, and smart with the input from everybody, then, then we're going to worsen the problem. We're going to make these houses even more expensive, and we're not going to handle the growth properly. If this doesn't get voted on next week, it's not the end of the world. If we need more time, we need to take it. I mean, I know this has been a long time coming anyway, but if this is a situation where we're not going to get it right, let's take the time. The other thing is, it's got to be, in my opinion, and my opinion only, so don't shoot me, but it's got to be more flexible. It can't be twice a year or once a year. It's got to be a monthly flexibility. This is a plan, like an index or a table contents. This is a plan. So the group of, and I don't even know how many are on the Planning Commission, was it 15? So the Planning Commission has been doing an excellent job, maybe not to everyone's liking, but I think Commissioner Hilton said earlier, it's got to hurt both sides for it to get better, right? Well, on the same token, maybe we need to increase our Planning Commission, or maybe we have to change the way we put people on the Planning Commission. Maybe we change the appointment process. But if we don't get this right, it's not going to be a detriment for a little while. It's going to be a detriment for a long time. Just like we lost the sewer treatment plant in 17, we don't know how long this is going to affect us down the road. So we've got to be very cautious here. I know what we have in place now may not be working to everybody's liking, but it works. So I don't think the rush is here. But, but infrastructure is not tied to this plan. Where's the sewer treatment plant going to go? Where's the pipes going to be laid? Where is their power going to come from? I mean, where are the new roads coming? There's no infrastructure tied to this plan. So I have a hard time, I'll vote no if we vote for the plan that we're being presented, I think, today, now that we've changed. I mean, I'm a no vote, because none of those questions have been answered. So I do like the idea of an A and a B, so we don't have to keep amending it. We have an amended, or a version one, or a version two, however you want to say it. But, but I'm very concerned if we don't get this right. All of us as parents are trying to figure out, how do we get more jobs to keep our children in Hamilton County, so we can keep our children close to home? So we're bringing these jobs into town, and we've got nowhere for them to live. So this is huge. This is huge. They can't afford to live there. So, you know, two of my sons are firefighters, City Chattanooga firefighters. They can't afford to live in Chattanooga, because the houses are so high. And they know it. The city knows that. That's why they're trying to fix their pay rate. But it's one thing after another, and this is a big thing that's going to implode on us if we don't take our time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shipley?
I guess my question would be to you, Commissioner Graham. More hours did we build? Do you really think that the price is going to come down? You do? Well, I can't see that. I cannot see that the price will ever come down. Everybody in this room now, now, these realtors, builders, myself, and anybody else know, you work every day on comps. Is that correct? And the idea is to keep the comps up, because if your comps are up, the more money you make, right?
Not necessarily.
Well, pretty close, and you're a realtor too. So the comps is where it comes from. Nobody is going to ever decrease. I was in the plumbing business for years. Every year, I helped my same amount of per fixture each year I'm in it. No matter what happened, material, but materials ain't going down. I mean, they're not going down, and they're not going to go down. COVID increased and destroyed the economy that we once knew we'll never see again. It raised prices. They're never going back. Now, back to the amendment, I would say it's setting right at the turn of the day of the amendment happened. You were here. The amendment kind of fell on the 11th hour right before the vote. None of these people, nobody knew the effects of the amendment drop, or what the amendment was going to say. That was really dissatisfying the people who'd worked for a year or more, and then get hit, what they got hit that day. I ain't anti-growth. We got to have bones. And like everybody else, we better do it right here, or we're going to be in trouble.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. We'll get started with public comments. 30 minutes? I mean, we've got a, we've got a big group on both sides here. We can split it up. If there's no objection, I'll give Commissioner Sharps has to say something.
Chairman, please. Yeah. I'll be fast. It just kind of sparked a thought in my head. We're talking about all these folks moving here, and all these kids everybody's having, and them needing a place to live. They're also going to need a place to go to work. I don't see any new industrial space on this map. That's something that's not been addressed. Where are they going to go to work? To be able to pay for all these houses on five acre lots? You know, there was an example given to us, I don't know if it was RPA or who gave it to us on the email, all this stuff, of some community in Atlanta that was like this model we ought to look for. The average house there is a million dollars. You know, we talked about prices going up. That's how you do it, you know? Restrict our ability to build in ways that are economical. I just, I don't know. I'd kind of sat on my hands there for a minute, but those are two things that we all got, we've got to consider. And I don't know, maybe, maybe we need to take it up in committee. Over time, I don't know. But I just wanted to bring that up and not let it go unsaid. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We're definitely in committee right now, so if there's anything you want to say, feel free. So we're, I'm going to go 30 minutes total, 15 minutes for the opposition, 15 minutes for the other group who's in favor. Who's got the clock? Okay. And then, I'm not going to regulate you guys. We're all adults. I'm not going to give you three minutes. I know you've heard, of course, many times. So if you got one person who wants to speak for a majority of you, that's fine, but let's just keep it, keep it cool and cordial, and feel just, like I said, just be respectful for the people behind you. And you got 15 minutes, and then we'll get started with the home builders. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Glasscock. I live at 1531 Lawrie's Drive on Signal Mountain. Ryan Glasscock, 1531 Lawrie's Drive, Signal Mountain. I've been a builder, developer, realtor for 47 years here in Hamilton County. But today, I've got my A1 resident hat on, not my builder hat on. But I want to preface my comments by saying that I wish the builders and realtors nothing but the best, and the RPA staff has always been very courteous to us, and that's been very much appreciated. Countryside residential. Countryside residential, very rural character, primarily single-family homes, large lots, open fields, woodlands, livestock forestry uses agricultural services, maximum density, two dwelling units per acre. It's my understanding, because of our gross acreage calculations and 7,500 square foot minimum lot size, you actually can have 5.8 dwelling units on one acre. Is that correct, Mr. Schultz? You get 5.8 units on one acre of ground? Oh, I'm, that's my understanding. You get 5.8 houses on one acre of ground because of the gross acreage calculations. Anybody reading that would think you get two acres. You don't expect, well, actually, in reality, there's 5.8 acres on one acre of dirt. And I wanted to add to the previous conversation about density. A couple of months ago, we were furnished information on how other peer counties use gross acreage calculations to determine density. I spoke with several of the planners and directors in these counties, and this is what I was told, and I've called them two and three times apiece to make sure I was accurate. Nashville-Davidson, their AG is a five acre minimum. Their AR2 is a two acre minimum with no gross acreage calculations. Knox County has a one acre minimum with no gross acreage calculations. Sullivan County is a one acre minimum with no gross acreage calculations in A1. Williamson County, they do have a gross acreage calculation. This is how they do it. Their minimum lot size is five acres. I use the 100 acre site as an example. You have 100 acres. You deduct for decentralized wastewater system, unbuildable areas, infrastructure. I used 20 acres as an example to this planner. Take that out of the 100, that leaves you 80 acres. Of that 80 acres, 60% must be a permanently protected open space. That's 48 acres. Now, you deduct the 48 acres from the 80, that leaves you 32 buildable acres. Now, this is where the gross density comes in. Their minimum lot size is five acres. You divide that into the 80, and that gives you 16 lots. So you can build, have 16 lots on that 32 buildable acres. So this 100 acre site has 16 houses on it. That's all. Our zoning allows, on a 100 acre site, 200 houses because of gross density calculations. It's a huge disparage between how the density is calculated. All these counties have a one to five acre minimum lot size. Hamilton County is the only county in this peer review that allows 5.8 units per acre in A1. I keep hearing about affordable housing, affordable housing. It's, it's not just about lot size. There's many factors that add into that. And I blame the consumer for part of the housing problems. We used to build 1,200 square foot homes with vinyl floors, formal countertops, fiberglass showers. You couldn't sell a house like that today. Mr. Sharps mentioned he grew up in a small home. I did too. I grew up in an 800 square foot house my dad built out of scrap lumber. Nobody wants to have that today. Most of today's buyers, they want 2,200 square feet, hardwood floors, granite and marble, cathedral ceilings. I don't believe you could sell a new house today the way we used to build. Just a side note, I found we're, major improvements to Roberts Mill Road are scheduled for 2050. Plan Hamilton is a compromise. How many people, how many people that live in A1 would actually prefer less density than more density?
Mr. Glasscock? Please direct your questions.
I'm sorry. I wanted to just see how many people would prefer less density than more I would just ask this commission to not further increase the density that we have in A1. If you want to be more in line with these peer counties, please do not increase our density. Thank you very much.
Camelton, 8618 Snow Hill Road. We have been working on this for a very long time, and I know that our commissioners and the RPA have as well. And to have these amendments come at the last hour is a little frustrating for us, and it's overly complicated things. We are not against growth. We are against high density on insufficient infrastructure. A1 has been two per acre for 60 years, and that set a precedent. A1 has been two per acre for sixty years in that set of precedent in this county, and it should stay there. We heard infrastructure follows development for twenty years, but it hasn't happened in our area. We heard the county still has to resurface the road, whether it's got one or ten homes on a road, but new subdivisions create new roads. And the county is responsible for those new roads on top of the ones that were already responsible for. In the twenty twenty-four cost of summary services report, the twenty twenty-three property tax direct rate was two point two three seven three per hundred dollars of assessed value. Point oh oh eight oh was allocated specifically for roads, only point oh oh eight oh out of property taxes specifically allocated for roads. A subdivision example, with twenty-eight lots, allocated sixty-nine dollars for that year. For ninety total lots, that would be two hundred and twenty dollars in one year and six thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars in thirty years. Subdivision roads typically need to be repaved in twenty to thirty years. The cost would be at today's estimates, sixty-two thousand. So they only, we only collect one tenth of what the cost would be in thirty years, and that does not include milling. So property tax from new development does not pay for roads. Also, we have these distances in the folder that you were given that are over twelve miles, miles. So if a two lane road is blocked, this is valuable time lost in an emergency situation. The more homes added, the more emergency response times increase. We do not have the infrastructure for all this urban sprawl that was created at three homes per acre. Mountain V Road Lee-Howie intersection is over ninety percent capacity now, and we already have over five thousand homes coming, which will double the track of the economy of our two lane roads. And it will not pay for the infrastructure. So we ask you to please pass our compromise plan as it is, and please do not pass the home builder amendments. Thank you.
Name and address, you have six minutes, uh, total.
Elizabeth Ford, seven nine nine one Prince Drive, Udoa. Plans ensure responsible development based on communities' vision and current infrastructure with defined areas for residential, commercial, and natural resources. A plan prevents urban sprawl, which is the uncoordinated expansion of an urban area into the surrounding rural areas that lack the proper infrastructure. I'm gonna major on what our priorities should be, and the elephant in the room is actually the economy. I watch the transactions every week in the paper for real estate, and they are diminishing dramatically. So when the music stops playing and you're all holding the bag with the money from the bank and you've got to spend it, what's gonna happen? Everything is coming to a standstill. So that's what we should be prioritizing is the sewers and the roads. The rest of the stuff will take another time when the economy recovers. That's critical. I think you need to address that. We are out of sewer and we're into flood plains. Zoning should be, should be halted just for now. And I urge you, well fortunately, we feel blessed to have elected officials that listen to their residents and formed a citizen committee to work on a compromise that allows growth but retains the vision and desires of the community. We, the people of Hamilton County, urge you to vote yes for compromise Plan Hamilton and no to the home builder amendments. Stand with the residents that are working to help shape the community responsibly. And remember, God sits high, looks low, and hates ugly.
Thank you. Okay. Four minutes.
Hi. Anita Willerson, one three three two one Heartland Trail. Thank you so much for allowing us to, to speak today. This runs deeper than just policy or planning for us. This is about our home, this is about our rural home that we have ourselves and the generations that will walk after us. I want to make positive that we are not against growth. We are not. We're not against progress. We want responsibility is what we're looking for, we're looking for balance. We want to maintain what we have and preserving our countryside. So that being raised and being said, we want our memories and everything, and I cannot say this enough, we are not against growth at all. So we, we're not against new neighbors, we want others to have the same opportunities that we had to live in the beautiful countryside, to have the peace and tranquility. We are, we see so much now here lately with the farmlands being turned to asphalt, all the traffic, the commutes are longer, it's not as safe as it used to be. So today, we're just asking for just a pause, not to vote on the amendment, or not to vote in favor of the amendments, not forever, just for now. Just give us time to build a better foundation before we raise more walls. So I just ask that you please say yes to smart planning, preserving the countryside, because once it's gone, we can't ever get it back. So we just have a choice today, and you can, members of the, the commission can say, not like this, not yet, not until we're ready.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Faulkner, I live at fifty-seven twenty-one Island View Drive, Harrison, Tennessee. I was fortunate enough to be a part of the citizen committee that rewrote some of Plan Hamilton for District Nine. I appreciate that opportunity. You all have heard from all the other people in the area, the residents that are concerned about the high density, lack of infrastructure. I will repeat what my predecessor said, we are not against growth. We understand it. I have a family, I have children. But we are against unbridled growth. Growth is going to diminish the beauty of the community and is not done thoughtfully. And I want to ask one thing of all of you all. There are commissioners that sit on the dais that are part of unincorporated Hamilton County, they represent that part. There are commissioners on the dais that do not. What I would ask is, before you make your mind up and before you decide how you're gonna vote, talk to the commissioners that represent unincorporated Hamilton County. Ask them their opinions, why they feel the way they feel. And remember, they've stood behind you when you all have had issues. Everyone on this dais has had community concerns and has had to have support from your fellow commissioners. I know there were tiny homes proposed once and, and other commissioners stood beside that commissioner, helped support that, get that beat down because his residents, his district did not want that. There were restaurants planned and campgrounds planned next to a nice subdivision in an area. Commissioners stood beside that commissioner and voted with him. So I'm asking that before you make up your mind, you ask the commissioners that represent unincorporated Hamilton County their opinions. Thank you.
All right, last one, we got about forty seconds.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Duval, I live on Colterville Road in Seal Creek. Thank you all for being here, thank all of you that were able to stay. I'd like to echo everything, those that came to speak before me. And I'd also like to point out that due to how long this has gone on, we have lost a lot of people that were here planning to speak that are in support of the Plan Hamilton that Kim Hilton and the Hamilton County Citizens for Responsible Development planned that they've worked long and hard for. We've all collectively worked for about five years actively, and we'd like you to honor what all that work was done, and just know that there are not as many people here that there were to begin with in support of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we got the clock restarted. Mr. Bell, state your name and address, please, finally.
Julian Bell, three two two one Harrison Pike, or Harrison Road, maybe Pike, in Chattanooga. I represent the home builders and residential housing industry. I'd like those members of the, the home builders and the housing industry to stand up just to show you who's here. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bell, if you'll just direct your question.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're here to urge you to modify Plan Hamilton. There's been a lot of talk about the home builders.
Was there something that needs to be discussed over here? Because if, if it's a matter of someone not being treated fairly, but I believe we listened to Area Nine for about thirty minutes when this meeting started. Okay. Could you please stop the timer and give Mr. Julian Bell the time that he deserves? Thank you.
Thank you. We represent hundreds of local businesses involved in the housing industry, thousands of, of employee or of residents of, of Hamilton County that live in all of your districts, not just District Nine. I want to, I want to give you an overview of the amendments that we proposed, and I'm glad to go into as much detail as you would like. Plan Hamilton, as proposed, promises to negatively impact three important things for Hamilton County. Housing cost, it will cause housing to be more expensive. Housing availability, it will cause fewer homes to be built, and property tax revenue. It will lead to slower property tax growth and lead to either higher taxes or reduced services. There have been no studies on how the plan will impact any of these three items, and we're extremely concerned. And we've offered amendments to help reduce the plan's impact of these, in these areas. Housing cost, the median, uh, uh, cost of a new home in Hamilton County, now it's over four hundred thousand dollars. The median house, the cost of any home, according to the realtors in twenty twenty-four, was three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. It is still rising. The average age of first time home buyer in Tennessee, according to the Times Free Press two weeks ago, is over thirty-five years old. It is going up. The dollars needed to buy a median priced home in Hamilton County is over a hundred and ten thousand per year. We are in a housing crisis and we're pricing our children and our grandchildren out of homeownership. Homeownership as a way to build wealth for retirement is coming to an end in Hamilton County, and Plan Hamilton does nothing to help that. Every surrounding county to Hamilton County has lower housing costs, and that's a big reason for the figure in the RPA slide deck that was played in every community meeting that says over ninety-one thousand people drive in from other counties every day to work in Hamilton County. We need to support regulations and policies that encourage new homes and don't discourage it, that work to lower cost of, of homes and not increase it, and policies that'll increase our tax base so that tax increases and service reductions aren't needed. We need to support regulations that decrease the amount of land that we use for housing, decrease sprawl. As we make more land required for housing, that increases the land that we're going to use up. Our amendments are offered to improve the plan in each of these areas. There's been talk about whether residential growth plays for itself, or pays for itself. The study that was commissioned by the county last year showed that it does pay for itself. In fact, it more than pays for itself based on services that are actually provided by the county. It's not a huge net positive, but it is a net positive, more so than any other residential property in, in the county. I've sent to you, each one, each one of you a copy of that plan. Density, a number of our, our amendments relate to density. Why is this important? The average cost of a developed lot in our county is about a hundred thousand dollars. Any new home that, that you buy is gonna have a hundred thousand dollars in land in it. The only way to reduce that is to allow more density. We can't control equipment cost or labor cost or material cost, but we can do something about land cost by, by allowing a little bit more density. Plan Hamilton designates seventy-eight percent of the unincorporated area of the county to countryside residential at two units per acre. Now what we're proposing is not a change to A1 zoning, that's been stated many, many times. What we're proposing is the countryside residential place type be increased to three units per acre. There would still need to be a rezoning to go from A1 to R1 at three units per acre, but it would be consistent with the plan, so it wouldn't require a plan amendment. Density, the lower the density, it results in large homes on large lots, expensive large homes on large lots. What we've offered is what we believe is a more reasonable approach. The only way we would get to three units per acre, according to our proposed amendment, is if you have sewer availability or a decentralized system or some new technology comes up to where you could do something other than a septic tank. This will decrease the overall land used for residential development, reduce sprawl, and help to reduce the increasing cost of homes. I think there's some validity what Commissioner Shipley was saying, prices don't come down very easily, but you can certainly reduce the square footage cost of a house so that we don't have the first time starter homes at, you know, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. The other part of, of plan that we propose amendments on is overly broad statements. And I, I regret the name of that category, I just didn't know what else to call it, but statements like this, in Area Seven, there's a statement that says the majority of future development in Area Seven should be located within the incorporated town boundaries of Signal Mountain and Town of Wall. No rezonings in, in Area Seven, that's what that says. Has to be in Signal Mountain and Town of Wall. They're not even part of this plan. Area Nine, the predominant development pattern of single-family residential on large lots will be maintained. Area Thirteen, hold development to base density on A1 property and incentivize affordable attached or zero lot line, single-family on infill lots in existing centers. And these are statements that can be used to deny a, a, a rezoning request by saying it's not consistent with the plan. And there are multiple instances of those, and I've laid them all out in our proposed amendments. New regulations. So the plan mandates or adds to a whole host of new regulations. Steep slopes, it, it requires sidewalks, buffer zones, landscaping requirements, setbacks, access points for subdivisions, connecting subdivisions to adjoining developments or properties. It dictates driveway spacing, garage setbacks. It talks about increased sewer tap fees, updating stormwater regulations, which we just updated, new flood plain rules, farmland protections. Now many of these regulations are simply stated in the plan, and we believe they should go through the normal process of updating our zoning regulations or our subdivision regulations and be fully vetted instead of stuck in, you know, a hundred page document where, you know, you can look through and find statements that can be used to, to contend that rezoning request doesn't comply with the plan and force a plan amendment. A plan amendment is a big deal to us. And the reason it's a big deal to us is the time that it takes to, to develop land is critical. Allow plan amendments only once a year certainly would be incredibly restrictive. Twice a year is, is still, think of the time that it adds to a development. We believe that allowing plan amendments on a monthly basis, where they're justified, which this body would have to vote in favor of those amendments, we think that is the reasonable way to do it. The other thing is that the plan doesn't really tell you what it means to require, what will be required to say something is consistent with the plan. The plan says that amendment will be permitted, the amendment will be permitted when there is a significant change in the development pattern or the completion of a public improvement of road, park, or sewer, which changes the basis on which the plan was developed for an area. We don't know why the plan was developed for any individual area. I've had discussions with, with development services, and they say some areas were, place type was determined by school capacity, some was road capacity, some was fire service, some was sewer availability. We've asked for a matrix of which areas those applied to, but we haven't gotten it. And so we view the amendment process as really ill-defined at this point. As a home building community, we realize that we can't build anything on, on most of the property in the county where there's no sewer, because we're required to put in a septic system at twenty-five thousand square feet. So that's a technological impediment to development that we're just stuck with. Let's not complicate that by adding an administrative and a regulatory layer that accepts our technological deficiencies and says, we're stuck where we are, let's add regulation on top of what they require us. And there's no reason to embrace this lack of infrastructure with this new layer of regulation. Again, our interest is in working to stop housing costs from going so high, to stop having more land developed. We want to have more homes on less land, not a whole lot more. We're proposing going from two units per acre to three in the countryside residential place type, and to, to be cognizant of the impact that this plan would have on tax growth. And I've watched, haven't attended, I've watched, I love the streaming capabilities you have, I've watched. you have, but I've watched your hearings, and I know how money is tight. And this plan will not make that any less so. In fact, it will exacerbate it. Thank you for the opportunity to address you, and I urge you to adopt our amendments.
Thank you, sir.
Sabrina Smithly, 9329 Houston Lane, and I'm joined by Josh Franham. He's the Governmental Affairs Director for the Greater Chattanooga Realtors. I've been asked on behalf of the Realtors to make a statement today, so I've prepared these remarks on behalf of the Realtors. Dear Commissioners, today I am speaking to you as Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee of the Greater Chattanooga Realtors. I am proud to speak for our members on matters that directly impact the future of housing in our county. As you all on the commission consider the joint amendments from the Realtors and the Home Builders Association to Plan Hamilton, we at Greater Chattanooga Realtors respectfully express concern about the potential impact the plan may have on our lack, local housing inventory. While we recognize the importance of responsible growth and thoughtful, long-term planning, we believe it is equally important to ensure that these efforts do not unintentionally limit the availability of housing across all price points. Limiting inventory often leads to increased home prices, making it more difficult for residents, especially first-time home buyers and working families, to find attainable housing options in our community. Expanding housing availability in every price range is crucial to stabilizing prices and meeting the needs of a growing population. Realtors and home builders offer valuable, on-the-ground insight into how planning policies affect current and future homeowners. We respectfully ask for continued collaborative dialogue that ensures housing affordability remains a central part of the Plan Hamilton conversation. Thank you for your time and service to our community. Greater Chattanooga Realtors uniquely advocates for both consumers and property owners, protecting property rights and promoting access to attainable housing for all. I'll just add that our Governmental Affairs Committee has had a number of meetings on this issue. Julian Bell has came to a couple of our meetings, so did Nathan Janeway. And the Realtors are really concerned, as Commissioner Graham pointed out, the affordability aspect. And this plan does not really address the attainable aspect that we're facing. Also, infringing upon individual property rights was another concern of the Realtors. And I think Josh may have a few remarks as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick, a few months ago, I gave you all a report that was from the National Association of Realtors, which measured the average economic impact of a typical home sale. And those numbers were for 2024, for the state of Tennessee. The typical, at a typical home sale, when you combine it for the entire year throughout the state, was $84.2 billion, which comes to an average economic impact of $120,000 and some change. And again, $120,000 per typical home sale. Thank you.
Want to have any comments? No lights? Karen, could you come back down to the mic? So when we were discussing this earlier, kind of how we wanted to move forward next week, and I hope that my fellow commissioners here will help me decide how we want to act next week. So Commissioner Smith, we were talking about two separate resolutions. I was talking about doing an A and B. I, after giving that much thought, I think that we could probably arrive to the same result, either way, in my opinion. So if it's the will of this body to move forward with two resolutions, one to include all the requests from the construction industry, the home builders, and then the other resolution to the Hamilton, Plan Hamilton just as is, is that it? That's my recommendation. I would, I mean, this has been going on for a really long time. I think it's time that we do take action. I mean, if there's anything up here, anybody has any real concerns that they want to maul over for a couple of weeks, please change my mind. Because as of right now, I think that, I think we're ready. I think we've had over 35 community meetings over the last couple of years. I think that everybody's voice has been heard. So again, if anyone else has any other suggestions on how we want to move forward, and again, there's another question that we need to ask ourselves, that we want to take action on this and then have to go back, like, to capture this, or this, and not have to go back to Planning Commission and then back to us? We talked about that very beginning. Karen Taylor? Again, if anybody has any other recommendations, I'm open ears for next week. Resolutions? So we will.
I confirm that then it'll be approved Plan Hamilton, and that is the Plan Hamilton that was sent to Planning Commission with no changes. And then approved Plan Hamilton and is amended, that would include the two items from staff, the Planning Commission's removal of the appendices, and then the development community changes. It is clear to me, when the development community is asking a change from a two to three, it is not clear when it says unclear language whether that should be amended, changed. And if you have guidance with that, we can include that.
Julian, can you step up? Julian? Julian, can you, Julian, can you come to the microphone? This is, this is us working together here.
Yeah, most of the, like, the overly broad statement was to delete them. I mean, I think the matrix, that's what it says, I think. Well, I can't see what.
Thank you. The matrix does say, and this is the matrix provided, it does have a proposed change and notes, remove, this is an example, remove a statement, remove a bullet point, change the density. So using that, we would draft the amend Plan, adopt Plan Hamilton as amendment would include the two staff changes, the removal of the appendices per Planning Commission, and the statements listed in the table. And that would be the second resolution.
Okay.
Okay. We will work on that.
We on board that? Mr. Bell? Okay. I just want to make sure, when we vote on something, that we, there's a lot of language in there that needs to be.
I provided the matrix for this purpose. I didn't have, I didn't get a Word document of the files until two days before the meeting, two business days. And so I did a matrix. I didn't have time to redline the document, but I did a matrix so that you could easily redline it. It says exactly what to do with the language. It quotes the language. If it was a revision, it says, take this and change it to that. So it's very easy to put it into a document from there.
Okay. Yeah, written form would be best. Anyone?
Yes, sir. I would like our attorney to go over this to make sure that these changes coincide with the will of the commission, because we're not trying to create a resolution that's one-sided. We're trying to create a resolution at the commission. And so can we look at the verbiage of the, we're adding a B to this? Can we make sure the verbiage is?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I won't know the will of the commission until the commission acts. We'll look at it after the commission acts.
Look at it, make sure the verbiage is correctly in it, because I think, I think the will of the commission is to break it into two. I think that was kind of decided here. So that was a will. So we just need to make sure that one states with and one states without, from what I understand. Is that correct?
Yeah. Again, I, one resolution that is adopting Plan Hamilton just as it is, Area Nine baked into just as it is, a separate resolution to vote on as it is with the amended resolutions from the home builder. Correct. And then the verbiage part of it, I mean, we got the language. You said you want to go from three months? You want, again, I know, I think.
I think.
What's a month?
It was monthly. I believe if you look at the, and I know, I know it's a lot of information that you have. If you look at the matrix that I provided, it will give the exact way to change the language that we've proposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we will try to get that done by tomorrow afternoon to have it submitted for review or.
It'll, any changes will be made public? Okay.
Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. It's been a long day, but I think you said what Commissioner Graham spoke about was important, that we take our time and get it right. I'm a visual person. I have to read stuff to understand what's been, what's been said. So I need to read it first.
I agree, Commissioner Mackey. I know the presentation we had was kind of summarized down as much as it possibly could be. Karen, any, I mean, any kind of, I just want this commission to be very educated before next week as far as exactly what, the density here, the time that they're asking for these cases to be reviewed. And again, I want Commissioner Mackey to be thoroughly educated. Give him whatever he needs, you know, whatever he asks for, as well as the rest of the commission.
We have.
Because I've been, I've actually been having a hard time finding some of the information that comes, because it goes away after two months. I just, it's hard to go back to the emails. But if you could just kind of resend everything to recap so we can actually get educated before next week, that'd be great.
I can resend it in email, and I can also, as mentioned previously, tomorrow we will drop off a binder with the plans, and then we will try to wrap up the resolutions tomorrow so those can go out. So those will be, instead of redlining the plans of like, here are the proposed changes for, all the proposed changes, could be a laundry list of those proposed changes. And then I can also, we have an overview presentation that if you, that might be helpful. I can also print that, put that in the binder, and I will also send that, and it kind of explains everything from start to finish. It's a broad overview.
Will one of your staff people be available if I have questions?
Oh, absolutely. So I'll put my information on there, and then Brian, and you're welcome, or Nathan, I'll put all of ours, and you're welcome to call any of us for questions, and we're happy to meet or talk.
Thank you, ma'am.
No other discussion, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming out here. Thank you all for being patient. We'll see you next week.